Uh, to begin our committee meetings. Uh, we have the educational support committee meeting in which we'll be talking about Buffalo Public Schools, strong community school programming, uh, during the COVID in our community schools. Um, as of right now, it's been a, it's been a hard fight with COVID. And, um, everybody had a lot of issues to deal with and still dealing with. And, uh, I believe that this district has responded very strongly and moving forward, uh, with the goal for our kids to receive education and also to, uh, to go forth, uh, learning together in our, uh, in, in the faculties that we took. But one of the things this district is very strong on is our community schools and what it's built upon. And our community schools had to change their goals this year, uh, because of the COVID. Uh, which normally on Saturdays, uh, we'll have a lot of events that's going on within the schools. And it was, um, necessary for, for our administrative staff to work together to, uh, put together a plan so that they can still utilize these tools that our community schools that's been governing our district for so long and, uh, working with it within our district. And, and moving forward with, with, uh, Corona issues, uh, how, how they, uh, adapted and still supplying these resources to our communities and stakeholders, our children. So as of right now, I'd like to, um, um, give it to, uh, our superintendent, Dr. Criner Cash, so he can introduce the staff members. I'll be introducing a PowerPoint presentation on our community schools and the changes that remain within it so that we can still give a, a strong education out to our children and families.
Thank you Chairman Hurd. Uh, colleagues, good evening. It is a pleasure to provide an update to you this evening on perhaps our most important signature initiative over the past five years. And that's our strong community schools. We have over 21, uh, strong community schools across the district. And they are all thriving. We knew they were thriving during pre-COVID. And many of them were, we placed them where we did and chose them where we did because they were on a receivership list. Many of these schools were considered failing schools and they were in receivership. Uh, and in some of the toughest, uh, highest gang, uh, territory in the city. Uh, they were all around these schools. And we said, rather than give in to that condition, we're going to not only fight it, we're going to change it and then, um, make history and do something nobody thought we could do. And so now most of these schools are in good standing and they are excellent, uh, choices for our communities and families. Tonight, we have the pleasure and I have the pleasure of introducing two really top-notch, uh, employees uh, who work for the district now and for Say Yes. Um, I just interviewed a young lady the other day and I had remembered her when I used to visit the jails, uh, here in Buffalo, uh, and check on the kids over there and the services that were provided. And this is one of the first people I met, um, those, those four or five years ago. And she was in there doing just an excellent job, uh, with our young people who were, uh, in juvenile detention. And so her name is Alyssa Montfuleto. And she is, uh, our new director of strategic alignment and innovation. Will be on the board packet for you, uh, in the meeting for next week for your approval, review and approval. And then of course, we have the legendary Tanya Staples, uh, who I had the pleasure of hiring through David Mauricio, uh, back, uh, five years ago. He came to me with, with her name and was so enthusiastic about it. And since that time, she's lived up to everything that, uh, has been said about her. She just does an excellent job, uh, many, many community contacts and it's keeping the glue together for our community schools. So there you have it. These two young ladies have worked together to put together 15 slides for your consideration. And then we'll open it up for discussion, turn it back over to Mr. Hurd. So ladies, you have the floor. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cash. And thank you for inviting me and Alyssa to present this evening on community schools. Um, community schools have, has been a pillar in our community. And with the vision of, of Dr. Cash and Dr. Mauricio in the early years, because it's now five years, we have been able to do some tremendous work around this particular initiative. Buffalo continues to be the lead in terms of the community, strong community schools model throughout the country. Um, we're constantly getting calls and, and individuals wanting to come and visit when we were in an in-person situation. And even when we pivoted to virtual programming, we were one of the first in the country amongst community school strategies to really go virtual with the level of programming that we offer. So what I want to do tonight is just give you a little snippet of where we were yesterday, um, today and what tomorrow's going to look like. So we can go to the next slide. So as you all know, that this has been a part of the superintendent's, uh, education bargain. When we started in the early years, the background on this slide was dark. But we've gone, as the superintendent said, in looking at the schools that are in good standing now. The days are brighter and continue to get brighter in the work that we're doing. Under the community schools model, a lot of the other, as David Mauricio would call them, um, pastries or enzyme fall within the community school strategy by providing rigorous elementary education, innovative high schools, et cetera. So as we've continued to go and create, when we were in the in-person model, the next slide, in-person model, we became a one-stop center for many of the 21 schools, where the center and focus of programming was on the child and on the parent. And then we had that diversity of staff that lived in the communities, worked in the communities, knew the communities, were trusted by our families to be able to bring programming and work in alignment with the principals, with the administrators, other community-based partners and organizations in bringing, as you can see, the various types of opportunities into the schools. So that when kids came and when families came, they were able to take advantage of things such as health clinics, legal clinics, all of the different type of ex- extracurricular programming, um, the academic programs by having the teachers very much involved and engaged in programming and opportunities. So that again, the relationships were being built between the teachers and the students and the administrators in the schools so that families were seeing school in a different light. Schools became the beacon within their community and families wanted to come and engage on a higher level on the weekend as well as during the school week. Next slide. As I said before, the community school navigators, they're a very diverse and eclectic team of staff that live and work in the communities that they are placed in the schools. They're there full-time, they're a part of the school staff. Uh, the principals invite them then to participate in SST meetings, um, faculty meetings, professional development opportunities as they exist. They build relationships with the students and with the parents so that there is a natural bond. Um, they serve as ambassadors for their school. They reach out into the local communities to find out what other assets exist in that community and bring those assets into the schools. They ve- they work very closely with the community-based organizations that are assigned to each of the school and identifying the partners and providers that are going to provide services, uh, throughout the school week as well as on the weekend. Uh, the navigators aligned very clearly with what school-based goals and objectives are. And when we were in an in-person environment, also working with the after-school, uh, CBO partner again to align programming and have particular themes and threads run after-school as well as in the Saturday programming. So this is just a snippet of some of the programs and activities that were offered in an in-person environment, um, within, within the Saturday academies prior to COVID. From September through March, there were 222 Saturday academies that occurred each of the Saturdays. Um, there were 3,330 activities that were within those Saturday academies. We had approximately 283 vendors that provided programs and services. On Saturdays, we also had the parent center programs operating as well as adult education. And so they saw there was 31 activities, uh, 31 series of events that occurred and 3,123 activities that happened as well between the parent center and adult education. Next slide. Again, this is just a snapshot. Um, we're going into our fifth school year of providing set, uh, strong community schools programming. And you can see how we were trending. Um, we ended, our highest year was the 2018-19 year where we had 53,000 visits between Saturday academies and parent center and adult education programs. Typically in January, February, that's when we start to see a dip in our attendance because of Buffalo's weather. But we still had families that were coming out even in some of the coldest temperatures. So what we decided to do last year was we changed our scheduling and limited the number of Saturday academies that we had during that period of time. So families, uh, wouldn't come out in the frigid cold temperatures. But we are steadily trending so that we are getting more and more families engaged. More children are coming out, more parents are coming out for the activities. And as you remember, we did have and offer free breakfast. We also offered, um, free lunch for the families. And this was an opportunity that families would come together for these two meals together and participate in activities within that three-hour period of time. Okay? So then things changed. COVID happened and we had to pivot very quickly into a virtual environment. Uh, we were determined that we were going to provide these services to families because families wanted the services, they were missing Saturday Academy. Our last Saturday happened March 7th. And we heard from families, you know, what are you going to do? We need to be a part of this. So we decided to bring programming into the households. Um, we developed a slogan or we had a mantra. If any of you know MC Hammer, Too Legit to Quit, that was a part of our story. We were too legit to quit. So we were one of the first providers or the first provider in the city of Buffalo to pivot into a virtual platform with Saturdays and with our evening suites that we had parent center programs. We also had pop-up programs that we call them that happened during the day. And then we had our virtual Saturday programming. Um, staff were self-taught on the various platforms that we exercised over this period of time. Um, outreach and engagement continued to happen as we were reaching back in with the principals and the schools and with the families that the staff had relationships with and continue to provide support services. So there was a lot of engagement happening via telephone, email, using different social media platforms. We also had surveys, um, that we administered, wanting to know what were some of the things that the families wanted to see. And our staff were even texting families. So again, we provided parent center, Saturday Academy, adult education program. As a part of this, this time, our staff were also very active and involved with delivering meals and food distribution. And that was another way to connect with families and provide them information about our, um, Saturday Academy programs. One of the best things that happened during this time, because of relationships, and again, this work cannot be done in isolation, you know, aligning with Buffalo Public School Departments, with our community-based organizations and other partners and providers, that all of the activities that we offered during this COVID period, um, from March through June, the services provided were at no cost. So we had a lot of our vendors to come in and they did this at no cost and no expense to us. Next slide. So this is just a snapshot or a screenshot of some of the Saturday Academy programs that happened. Um, we had, uh, again, we had a lot of vendors and providers that came in. Um, they were able to pivot very quickly as well. This was a new environment, taking things from an in-person to a virtual platform. Uh, we used Zoom and we also streamed live on Facebook so that we could bring people in and engage with our vendors in a very, um, very engaging manner, engaging way, but as well as engaging those that were on Facebook. So we would ask the Facebook audience to pose questions. They would, they would pose their question, we would get them to the presenter. And again, everybody felt as if they were a part of it. So these were just some of the topical areas and some of the programs that we offered. Uh, we were able to do a college tour. And we did two weeks of college tours with 19 colleges and universities in the area because we know the seniors were sort of down because, you know, they're expecting their first-year experience to be one that they're on a college campus or still continuing to explore what school they want to go to. And they weren't able to make these visits. So we again, wanted to bring the colleges to our students here in the city of Buffalo. We had application, financial aid workshops, um, et cetera. We also had a lot of academic programming that happened. We had social emotional activities, health and wellness activities that went on. And we tied academics in a very fun and engaging way for students during this period of time. Next slide. Again, this is just a snippet of some of the virtual activities. Students went on virtual field trips. We had, um, staff through Buffalo Public Schools to come on and talk about the parent portal, um, children with special needs. We had salsa dancing. The parent centers had sickle cell support groups, um, and courageous conversations during this time. Families were also able to engage in introductory languages. So there were just a lot of different things. Our programming, we were really gearing our programming for students from pre-K all the way to high school and then for our parents and also for our community residents as well. Next slide. So again, this is a snapshot of some of the data that we were collecting during this time. We looked at, um, the number of reaches, engagement, shares that were happening. Um, and we would measure these at different intervals. Uh, we would look at it, the, what you see here is immediately following a particular Saturday program or an evening suite program. And then we would look at it 24 hours afterwards and then five days just to see how many views did this particular segment get? How many times was it shared and how many engagements? So when you think about engagements, that's the number of times somebody clicked or liked or shared or commented. So we had significant number of engagements. Um, our ending data at the June 30th period was about 36,000, um, number of engagements. When you look at the number of individuals that we reached, we reached approximately 93,000 individuals. And again, that's the number of individuals that have seen any part of the program. And then with views, we had 49,000 views. And a view is measured based on three seconds. So if someone was looking at, um, a, a video for three seconds or more, then that counted as a view. Okay, next slide. So now we've pivoted to our Saturday Academy. Let's see if we can get this played. This is a jingle that one of the community school navigators created. Oh, it's not playing. You don't hear the sound, but what we needed to do, because we were using a lot of other music, um, that we would bring in as a part of our introduction to our Saturday Academy. So one of the staff, Cameron Jackson, created this jingle and it's really, really cute. So that's, that way, everybody knows that we're about to start our Saturday program. Um, the recording comes on so that it is streaming live on Facebook as well as we have an audience that's coming into Zoom. So we're being very intentional now. Thank you, Dr. Brenner. So Saturday academies, um, we've launched this year and we had our first virtual academy October 3rd. We'll be running, uh, Saturdays from October 3rd through June 30th. We have a three-hour, again, uh, format platform from 10 to 1. We are working, trying to, um, engage families to preregister because we really want to track the number of BPS children and parents that are coming on, participating within our virtual platform. We're still going to stream live on Facebook and will continue to measure our reaches, our views, et cetera, and how we're engaging. So we're supporting families through connected learning. Uh, we're helping families understand how to use the various technologies and platforms. Um, our staff are working with their principals and with the school-based teams in identifying cohorts of students that they can follow up and help to support. So students that may need assistance with, um, technology, um, with connecting with a particular teacher, their education packets, et cetera. Um, providing social emotional support if there are other things that are needed. If families are in need of food, then helping to connect them with our family support specialists and other supports that are within the schools. Um, there's continued alignment with principals and BPS departments and our CBO partners. So they've been very much engaged in the planning and the design of how we're, um, delivering our programs and services at this particular point. We've changed our format slightly. So we have a main room that everybody will come into. And then we've, we develop breakout sessions. So we have breakout sessions for the littles, which are pre-K through fourth grade, our middle school students, five through eight, and high school students, nine through 12. We also have adult ed and parent center programs that will happen on Saturdays. And we have a principal's corner. So we're inviting these, each school will be highlighted each Saturday and we're inviting the principals or their designated to come in and have a conversation with parents or have a conversation with their students. So this is a time, again, so the schools and the families can connect. And then we have school-based activities. There may be something that's really unique to a particular school and they would like to highlight. And so we have those kinds of school-based activities. Um, we're continuing to do the wellbeing checks with families by telephone, social media, meal deliveries, uh, supply giveaways, et cetera. Uh, we just had a food giveaway last week at East High School last Saturday with Feedmore. And again, it's reaching out to families, identifying what some particular needs or supports that are. And then how do we help to broker or how do we help to provide these services to families? Um, we're using our data to really drive our programming. So what is the data telling us? What do families want more of or want less of? What are the trends so that we can alter our programming? How are we engaging with academics, attendance and with parent and student engagement? So I'm going to let Alyssa talk a little bit here about, um, the CSP projects.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, Tanya. Thank you to Say Yes, because we, prior to my appointment, a lot of this work, the hard work was done with in collaboration with Say Yes and our principals and our CBOs. So it, it's really come together, it's quite wonderful. Um, as you can see here, this is our virtual Saturday academies outlined until January. Um, and within these Saturday academies, we have, not just Say Yes, but we have a variety of community-based organizations, um, that provide, uh, many services to our families and our students. And those community-based organizations also subcontract to other community-based organizations to provide additional support. Um, for example, at School 59, they subcontract with the museum to provide museum programming such as virtual tourism museum and, um, other programming to highlight that entity. Uh, so that really brings a lot of enrichment, um, to the academic drive behind community schools. Um, in addition to that, our CSP funds also support, um, positions in each of our community school buildings, which really, um, really help to, um, enrich our students and enrich the academic, um, the academic needs. And these positions include, um, guidance counselors, instructional specialists, re- uh, literacy coaches, um, and the list goes on. Um, each community school does get two of those, uh, two FTS, excuse me, um, per school year for that. Um, we also provide support to our equal opportunity schools. And we have five of those in community school, in our community schools, um, five of our high schools. So there is money allocated, um, to support that initiative as well, which is part of the community school initiative. So in addition to virtual academies, you know, we do, CSP does, um, stretch beyond just our Saturdays to really enrich the lives of our students and to ensure that a lot of this programming comes full circle. Uh, we really look at this from a whole child model. So we want to support the child in all their systems, um, school, home, community. Um, and we really want to provide them with, um, every opportunity, every programming we have. And CSP really tries to maximize our funding to do so, um, with the support of our, of our, um, folks at the district level. So there is a lot that we bring to the table to, um, really support our students and these initiatives for Saturday academies. Tanya?
Thank you, Alyssa. So as Alyssa said, these are the dates for the remaining, um, Saturday academies and the themes. Each Saturday has a particular theme. And again, we look at having health and wellness, academics, social, emotional, recreational programs, um, as a part of the activities, um, takeaways. So even our vendors now are starting to put together kits so that there can be, um, activities that the families are doing at the same time that they're seeing it on screen. So we are working with the, uh, or working through the grab-and-go's where families can go to these particular sites. And as they register, then they can pick up kits to participate in activities. These, this is just again, another snippet of activities that have happened thus far. Um, the principal corner and we've had, all of the colleges and universities are still taking a role and a part in our Saturday academies as well as wanting to provide tutoring and academic coaching to the students and supporting the schools as student teachers throughout the school day. Um, we've done the virtual, virtual pumpkin painting tour or to the pumpkin farm, going to that. And kids had pumpkins that they did pumpkin painting at home. Um, they're still learning and participating on their platforms that they use during school, Schoology, Class Dojo. So there is instruction on how to use and master those particular platforms. Uh, Chef Steve came in, again, healthy cooking, uh, during this particular point. So we're still thinking and listening to our teams. We're listening to the parents, we're listening to the students about what activities they would like to see and how can we embed them as a part of the virtual program. So as we're starting to think about what an in-person model would look like, there's a lot of considerations that we need to take into account. In an in-person Saturday Academy, um, our attendance would range anywhere from 125 to 450, depending on the school, depending on the activity, depending on the time of the year. So it's really fluctuated. We would need to think about what that would look like as families start entering back into the school and adhering to social distancing protocols, um, the screening that would need to happen, uh, making sure masks and gloves and cleaning that would take place all throughout. Um, I think our program would need to be redesigned differently. So it would not be that free flow that we had previously. Parents and students could pick out activities that they wanted to go to. We would need to probably limit, um, building usage and rooms that families would go in and then have a cleaning plan and cleaning protocol as rooms began to turn over. So there's a lot that would need to be considered. The safety measures, again, the, the safety precautions, space and programming design, um, working with our vendors on how they're going to be instructing in an in-person model. And if there would, if we would think about having still a phased-in approach and continue to have possibly school-based virtual academies that could stream specifically on school platforms like Teams, for instance. Next slide. So Say Yes, um, Hurd, the district, providing us the opportunity to be its designated. Um, we are serving as a conduit for the virtual learning hubs. And basically, there are about 50, close to 50 organizations, faith-based, daycare centers and community-based organizations that are serving as virtual learning support centers throughout the city of Buffalo. We are the contract partner. So we are working with them to set up their contracts, to, to set up all of the necessary protocols um, that need to be in place. to set up all of the necessary protocols that need to be in place. Our staff have gone out and done site visits to make sure that safety is being adhered to, and they're following, again, CDC guidelines and PPE requirements. Each of the sites are responsible for their own programming throughout the day. But it is expected that, based on the student coming in, they are coming in equipped with their tablet or laptop. And if they don't, the sites are going to be providing those things. But they're coming in with the schedule from their schools. So that each of the virtual learning centers will be supporting the students in completing their school assignments, and so that they can stay on task and on track with what's expected from them educationally. The centers opened October 5th, and we are close to about 700 students, I believe, that are enrolled at this particular point. The virtual learning centers will end December 30th. So there is still enrollment happening as we speak. The sites are going out, and they're looking at students that meet the criteria. They have to move the financial income guidelines of Erie County Department of Social Services. Or if they have the ability, the sites can charge a nominal fee for families to come in on a daily basis. So that's all I have.
Thank you, colleagues. Well done. Board member heard. Turn it over to you.
Yes. I'd just like to say, first of all, I'm a great fan of our community schools and our Saturday virtual programs and the programs that we have on Saturdays. I would like to say thank you to Mrs. Alyssa Mufasa and Mrs. Tanya Staples for putting this program together. I know it took a lot of work and a lot of time to get these illustrations together, this PowerPoint presentation and the information that you have disseminated to give us a brief view of our community schools. And I know the impact that it has on our community and our children. Also, I'd just like to say personally, I know most of us grew up in the city of Buffalo or went to a Buffalo Public School. And I never seen a program like this before in my life. I mean, if I would have had programs like this growing up, I think it would have really adapted into my life to where, you know, I felt that I could became or thought to become somebody, you know, growing up, or thought I could be, you know, maybe possibly administrator or possibly help people, which, you know, my spirit and my heart always tends to do. But I just like the fact that this district is going on with this. And this wouldn't be anything without our strong community partners also. I know with Say Yes, Education David Russ has, you know, spent a lot of time speaking with them and working with these programs. And I'd like to say thank you for the work that our community partners have put, placed into this also, and in many others. Today, you said we had over 222 Saturday academies with 283 different vendors. So this is a support for our community and other entities in our community for working with our district. So this is a... I'll put for community reach also. And I appreciate, you know, what this district has done in support of community partners. That's people, minorities. That's how, you know, trying to help with education and move forward within our district. I visited, I think I was all of the community schools. I'd like to say all of them. Some I were very impressed. I mean, even from going to East and watching the driver's education program, bringing us up in youth, get their driver license. Some things that wasn't mentioned, and watching the weekly meeting for parent groups at that location. And also the college tour. And I can attest to myself and the Vice President, Vice President Lou Petruski here about one of the tours that went out to Hillburg College, which we... one of the colleges we affiliated with, which I know that we had over 48 different students that had finally went to that college, you know, from last year from the school. And they went over to the criminal justice department over there, and they recruited also some applicants also that went to that program also. So this community school program is working. It is giving our children, you know, a lead that they can attend the college, do that college program, that they belong to college. Some other things, every week, I... Other week that we go over for a breaking barriers program there. And we see other things where I met Chef Steve there also. And so I can tell you, this is working. We have a lot of participation. A lot of teachers volunteering, spending time in their halls for our Buffalo Public School teachers. So I'd like to commit them on it. And also, East High School, and I know we have our food giveaways. You know, the community comes in force, you know, with shopping carts and baskets and cars, the food products. So this district is working. I can attest to that. And I'm sure the board members that have been with these programs also have been willing to say some of the things. And I know that other board members have questions about, you know, what's going on, especially with our new virtual learning support center and our community partner government involved with that. We also report that there were over 9300 individuals that participate, and I can see a lot more than that. Also, the exercise that's involved in it, the Zumba classes, the exercise programs, is not only meant for our stakeholders, our children, but also the community members, their parents and grandparents. And one thing that I was really, really impressed of was over... Was over at Lafayette School, to where their morning programs and the food programs. I thought I was going to see our children there. And... But what I seen was English and language learners, families. Families, mothers and grandmothers attend this program and getting food, breakfast, and lunch there. So it was a family-oriented program over at Lafayette to where people who spoke Spanish or the different languages, you know, conversed. They came together as family members, may not even know each other. They from their whole family and grandma, they came and ate and participated in the programs, which I'm very, very proud of. And another thing that wasn't mentioned was the Northland Workforce Corridor program. We had a graduation year from our breaking barriers program. We also did tours there with our children about, you know, higher education, our CTE, our career technical learning pathway. So it's more things, you know. I know we couldn't, in hours' time, possibly put everything into a PowerPoint presentation that the statements that you're working on. But this program is very fluent. It's very sort of in our community. And I wish that we can find a way to make sure that all households, all parents, you know, get opportunity to see the programs that we're doing or get a chance to invite to be there. I would like to hear more, you know, from our board members and also more about the virtual learning hubs, because I know this is a new program. And I know Pastor Larry Donaldson is very instrumental in making sure that this program works and writing this program and letting the ear and the helping hand to him. And I'm also with Say Yes and David Russ, he's coached about this program multiple times, and how it can be used to help build our... Support for our children during the COVID crisis. So as of right now, I don't have a... I don't have a list in front of me about anybody's ancestry. So I will go across the screen when I was starting with our Board President, Sharon Douglas-Tatman. If you have any questions or anything that you'd like to reflect on.
I don't have anything, Tanya. I think you've covered quite a bit. I want to say thank you to Tanya Appleton, the Say Yes, for the work that you have done, as well as our staff. It's been an ongoing process for the past five years. And it's... We're very proud of our association and the work that's being done. My only recommendation as we grow this program, Adam Appleton, is to make sure that we dig down and start making... Providing more grassroots vendors the opportunity to participate. When the community school programs were initially presented, it... The goal was to empower the community and to make sure that we lift up the grassroots organizations that are there. We have work to do in that area, because I've had this conversation with Say Yes. And we are very much aware that you can only do what our policies allow. And in order to lift these people up, we need to have in place the ability for these small vendors to be paid in a timely and a quick manner. And if we place, we will be... They will be able to work more with grassroots organizations. The average mom-and-pop organization, or the organization that would be bringing additional supports and strengthening this community program, cannot go three months without being paid. And so we've had this conversation in the past about our minority business policy, about looking into what Erie County does as far as these smaller vendors to help them. So if we're going to grow our minority women business enterprise policy, we need to possibly start by changing our policy, and we can probably start with our community program. So I'm not dumping on you, Tanya. I'm just bringing it to the board's attention that in order for us to really make this a grassroots organization or an opportunity for grassroots people, we must, as a board, look at our policies and make sure that we can lift up people from the community. And we will have the same people in the after-school program, the same people in the summer program, same people in the evening programs, and you won't have the doors open for other people. So that's a goal that I'd like for our board to consider working out to make sure that we empower people that live within the communities and that can help them also be a part of this initiative. But other than that, I'm just so pleased to see the great work that you're doing. And I want to thank you and continued support. I want to hear, particularly since we are looking at things through new eyes, our new set of lens, our equity lens, that many of our staff under Dr. Cash is kindly talking about, their equity lens perspective, that we also talk about our equity lens, and we talk about distribution of resources for our community schools. So we'll be expanding that communication, that conversation and those communications. I'm where what Say Yes is doing, because I am part of the... One of their committees, their steering committee, and the things that they're doing for equity. But I want to make sure that it transcends across everything that we do in this district. And that's all I have to say on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board President Doug Tatman. Next, we're going to go with Vice President Lou Petruski.
Thank you. I've become Polish. But I wanted to thank everyone for your hard work. This was truly one thing that was missing from the public schools, was the community component and reintegrating our schools into the neighborhoods and offering all these programs and all the various things that parents and educators were looking for. So this has been very, very, I think, well-received and successful. Along those lines, I just had two general questions. One, I was just wondering, have you looked at the data if there's any correlation between, you know, participating in these programs and either improved grades or improved attendance? Has anyone looked at that yet?
Yes. So we work with Erica Boyce, evaluator with Buffalo Public Schools. And on a weekly basis, when we were in the in-person environment, Erica would look at our data, because we want to look at retention. We've seen some incremental changes over the past four years. And so when students and families come in at least three times, what we're finding is that, again, this is incrementally, what we're finding is that attendance during the school week starts to improve, and you see some movement in their academic performance. So we want to be able to have a tighter, a stronger correlation, because we do recognize and realize that there is a lot of things that are also happening during the school week that the administrators and the teachers are doing to increase academic performance, as well as getting students and families to get to school every day and on time. But we do... Erica had put together a scorecard last year. And so we're in process of looking at the things that we're measuring in this particular academic year and seeing, again, what those trends are going to be. So yes, definitely, we have a scorecard. We were meeting on a weekly basis to look at the data, to look at the trends, to make improvements to programming. And that would involve our community schools team, as well as BPS staff and our CBO partners.
And just a second question, because I didn't see it specifically listed. But last year, I had an opportunity to attend an event, School 19, the Native American Magnet. And one of the things that was discussed, being offered at their community school, was Seneca or another indigenous language, just as kind of an option. I was wondering, did that ever come to fruition? Or not that... I'm getting acquisitive look.
Yeah. School 19, is it one of our community schools? So... No, they're not one of our community schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. I was under the impression they had after-school and Saturday things going on there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They may have been doing it, but I'm not aware of that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Staples.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Staples. Let's next go to our second Vice President, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, my screen is acting weird. But yeah, thank you so much, Tanya and Alyssa. That was a very good presentation. I have always been a fan of Say Yes. My son was in high school. He graduated in 2016. But what it reminds me of, the Terrence said about, he wished he had these kinds of things in school. Was in school, school age, Mr. Beck, who was a principal, who recently died. Back in my day, initiatives were prevalent. So we had the African-American Center. We had the PAL. Schools just stayed open back then. It was just community schools. And so it was like a little town. Mr. Beck would come around in the community, talk with my parents, talk with other people's parents. That's just how we were raised in Buffalo Public Schools. So this initiative is so critical in this era, because it goes back to something Dr. said today about kids feeling good about themselves and coming into an environment that's welcoming. Saturday programs seem to be more welcoming, probably because they're smaller in terms of children. And you have teachers there, you have principals there who are serving the children, and the kids are feeling good about it. So I'm excited about this initiative. And it's too bad that we're in a pandemic, but you seem to have... Well, you and your team seem to have, you know, began to look at other ways to combat this pandemic and still provide the opportunities that our kids so well deserve and need. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. And going across the screen, the next person that we have up is Dr. Amber Vera.
I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work and your clear presentation. And I appreciate the work to engage students, because having those positive experiences with schools, as you've shown, are crucial. There's a link to attendance in these programs and attendance in school, and also school performance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. And to the top, we have Jennifer McCosey.
Hi, good evening. So repetitive or not, you do deserve gratitude for the work that you do. I also want to thank you. These programs are everything everyone has said and more. I do have a question, though, as far as opportunities in these, maybe not so much now since the schedule is out. But do you have, or are you looking into student kind of facilitated groups or workshops where I believe it's a fantastic opportunity for students to be able to engage other students? Possibly bring more, you know, participation and uplift all that we've talked about as far as, you know, attendance. It might be able to really bring them into the schools, and they talk about it, you know, while virtual class or whatever. But yeah, so student-engage facilitation, maybe also being able to link the inter-high folks, because they have that leadership role in our high schools. folks because they have that leadership role in, in, in our high schools and seeing what kind of ideas maybe they can bring to the table. Some of them are going to cooking school as well, maybe they can like be side by side with your chef that's cooking, you know, and just different things. You have folks that are interested in physical fitness and health, so anybody who's doing anything along those lines of health and wellness, they can team up or create their own avenue. I know there was conversation about this, I've actually had some conversations with folks before about it from Say Yes, but I just don't know if any of those have come to fruition or bubbling to the top. So that's, that's my only, I guess, kind of suggestion. And other than that, making sure that, you know, we, we work together that if this really doesn't pan out, we don't have all kinds of participation, whatever the Say Yes and BPS connection is, how we can utilize other avenues. We have the food delivery, we have things outside of this virtual program, but what can we do to, to kind of strengthen things again, not just new lens around equity, which we are focusing on, but a new lens on life in general? So how can we team up to maybe, you know, if it isn't 100% with the 53,000 people we're getting every year and it's, those numbers aren't the same, you know, really putting our heads together and how can the Board of Education really help you to, you know, uplift? You know, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I to myself, you know, whatever it is that you're doing on any level with any school, let me know, we can blast it. Yeah, so I'm looking for how I can really help you out and, you know, also working with a lot of young folks in, in what I do outside of the schools and the district, I'd love to be able to engage them on a better level too.
Thank you. Those are really great suggestions. We did test out this past summer when we were doing our virtual pop-ins and, let me back up, even last year when we pivoted virtually, we had students facilitating from Herman Bedelia School with one of the teachers there. So they facilitated a origami, making origami program and that really went over well. And then we did some things on this past summer. So we have put together our themes and our program dates, but we are still developing content. So I will definitely look at how we can engage more students in programming and delivering program. We're going to have a student from Bennett, actually that's going to start to do our flyers. So we're going to work with the student, so the flyers will have the student take and the student lens on them instead of staff, which we're really excited about. So they're going to start putting those things together and moving forward. But you're right, we need to get more involvement in that way with program and just the delivery of program. We do have a pretty ambitious outreach schedule and we do work very closely with a lot of department heads within Buffalo Public Schools. Like I said, we have our, what we call our community schools leadership meetings on Fridays and we sit and we talk about, you know, what are the processes, what are the strategies? We just reconvened since school has started this past Friday. But we have a very aggressive outreach schedule because we really want to be able to reach as many children and parents that we can possibly meet that are attending Buffalo Public Schools. So our staff will be working through their principals and their administrators. They're going to be going back out into the community. When we first started community schools, superintendent and the communications team and our team at Say Yes had put together this marvelous flyer that went to every single household. And then we had a lot of touchpoints that way and we were doing door-to-door engagement and reaching families. Well, with the pandemic, we have to be careful. So we are going to look at, you know, what the opportunities are as the weather permits to continue to get out and talk to families and be at grab and goes. And our staff are at the schools on days when principals are there. So again, talking with the school teams and how they're going to help to push out the information getting to children and families. So yes, we can continue to keep you apprised and let you know ways that we can also support that effort.
And Dr. Cash and, and like staff, I just thought of this, I'm sorry to take a little more time, but can this be, if we were able to bring students in to facilitate, can this be sort of an initiative around their, what is it, their extra credit or their college credit, their community service hours? I'm not sure how that works, but that, you know, say that they do facilitate and it's something that, you know, is really engaging and they can keep up that attendance, can they be using these hours for their community service hours in order to graduate? That's not something I got to ask her now, I'm just saying that, just kind of popped into my head a lot of this. Now I'm done, I swear, Terrence, sorry.
Thank you.
It's an interesting concept, Ms. McCosey. I'm not sure we can do it, but we can look into it. Mr. Hurd, before you go to the next board member, I just want to make a quick observation. Some of it is building on what Ms. McCosey suggested about student engagement. I was at a program and I recall it very vividly at Herman Bedio. And that navigator there, he's fabulous in that, in that part of the community that he's engaged in. What's his name, Ms. Staples? I really like him.
That was Lawrence?
I don't know, say his full name.
Daytwon Antoinetti, right?
I think so.
Daytwon Antoinetti.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And there were these eighth graders, Jennifer, that were teaching and working closely with some younger children, third grade, fourth grade, and the parents had brought in the younger ones and the, I think they might even been seventh and eighth graders, they came in on their own, but they were there to, to help out, to coordinate and to instruct and teach and work closely with the younger students. So I thought that was an excellent example of how we engage students to help other students. And then one other quick, quick observation over the years, and I think you'd agree with, is it was always warming and dear to me when I would see the, the teachers and the staff come to the Saturday Academy and then they would bring their children. And then their children would mix and play games and, and do art activities and so forth with the children who came from that, from the immediate community. I can think of a better way to, you know, to bridge some of the, the understandings and, and the, you know, whatever your pre-described notions are, they sort of dissolve when you start bringing your kids to these Saturday academies and, and, and working with, side by side with, with parents and their children. Some of you I've seen do it, but I just saw that over the years with the staff in particular. And I, and I saw that they saw their students in a different light and, and began to, I think, appreciate them more. So anyway, just didn't know if you, if you would concur with that observation.
Definitely. I'll share a quick story about Ms. Dabney. So during the week, Ms. Dabney suited up, I'll say, very professional looking. And this one particular Saturday, she had on stretch pants and a, and a sweater, and a stretch pants and a sweater. And I just remember one of the children at the school said, oh my God, is that Ms. Dabney? Look at her! You know, so again, it starts to break down those barriers, how the children and the families are relating to the principal, the administrators and the other teachers and how the staff at the school are relating to the families. And so different bonds, different relationships. And so when you're calling and talking with a family about the highs and lows of that student, it becomes different because you have this relationship that's going on and families are continuing to come in because they want to see a Ms. Dabney in her stretch pants and that big smile on her face and she's supporting them throughout the Saturday. So the relationships we have seen that have formed and the reasons why children and families come in, especially when the teachers are there, you know, teachers have a following and the children want to be with their teachers, their teachers are nurturing, they're supportive, they're uplifting, and so they want to be a part of that on the weekend as well. And families are coming in because again, these are things that we can do as a family. Even we're seeing in the virtual environment, in front of the devices, families are sitting together. So you hear the mom, you hear the dad, you hear the guardian and you have the children or multiple children that are there, but families are together during this time. And if you see some of the footage, especially at exercise time, you have mom and the daughter doing exercises together or they're talking about the cooking lessons. So all of those things are important because it also is reinforced throughout the school week. And children and families are talking about these kinds of things that they're experiencing. And our tagline for community schools is, we're here for you and we're open to everyone. So we love when we see BPS staff come in with their children and we see other community members come in because we are here for everyone.
I would just like to reflect on Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Alvarez over at Bennett, all, all the sporting events and the school program he brings his son with. And the host, Tyra Tuh, reflects him as a son as his little brother. And they've built that continuity with one another, you know, and that relationship that's so strong over there at Bennett, despite his programs and so, so I'd like to commend him on that also. So just going off with Dr. Cash, reiterate it. And moving forward, next we have Mr. Scott, Mr. Larry Scott.
Yeah, I don't have anything really, just want to commend Ms. Staples, the staff Say Yes Buffalo for everything that you're doing to remain a strong partner with us as we operate, navigate in this, this COVID world. You adapted, as did all your staff so well, just like the district staff here in these times. And, you know, I, I miss the Saturday academies and when we get past this COVID time, that's one thing I really look forward to is being able to take it out to those Saturday academies. And just the virtual academy, learning academies that you are organizing, I think, I think is a phenomenal idea and it's going to be a tremendous support to our families. I had a good conversation with Mr. Dan Crossviola recently, talked to him about how some of the daycares are really in need of being connected to the internet. It sounds like there's going to be some coordination to assist with that. And then just lastly, you just mentioned it a little bit, that people I don't think realize that Say Yes Buffalo has really been critical in reaching out to some of those families, those disengaged families and students. David Rush shared some data with me towards the end of the summer about the amount of home visits that Say Yes staff have done since the spring. And, you know, that's, that's to be commended. We always need that to reach those tough families and tough students, but especially now in this, this COVID world, we really need it. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next we have Paulette Woods. You got any comments or questions?
Oh, yes, I, I want to thank Tanya and, and her staff for being a beacon in our community. That, that's, you couldn't have summed it up better, a beacon in the community where the children can come together. Because when I was with the youth division, the key for our children were special delinquency prevention and youth development activities and safe havens, someplace for the children to be. And the programs, the Saturday programs are exactly that. I know I have attended quite a few women, you know, you, you have so many wonderful, varied activities, the dancing, you had rides and yeah, I saw whole families coming through the community, some of the block club presidents. So yeah, I, I thank you for the presentation that you put on there. I commend you for your diversity and staffing. That's something that's very key for our, our, our youth. You know, we do have this problem where there's only 9% of our teachers that are, match our, our, our student body, our brown and, and black student body. So your programs and your diversity of staffing gives them models and, and youth to work with. As Ms. Kotman, our president, mentioned, I am very interested in programs for our MBE, WBEs to say, do you do business with Buffalo Schools? How do you get a contract to provide some activities through the community schools programs? And yes, in Erie County, we did look at special expenses that one is expensive. We looked at giving 25% of the grants funding upfront so that you have your startup funds covered. So I'm really looking forward to initiatives that will, community, community involvement. I, I know the homicide prevention program has been trying very hard to get involved with the community schools. I've spoken with a young lady who has a World of Girls program that wants to address this of young black women and how they're being treated as a grown adults and, and, and tool beings and addressing that push out of our African-American young girls. We have some programs that want to address that. So I'm looking forward to connecting some of these community people with you and having programs to show them how they can help to make your program even better. A great job and thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. And I, I would like to say, last year, I think it was, that we worked with Buffalo Public School Department leaders and we did put on a vendor fair. So we put on a vendor fair, we had about 84 vendors that had come out and different BPS, the purchasing department, I think we had someone from the legal department was there, as well as our CBO agencies to talk with entities about contracting in community schools and the things that are needed, insurance, you know, the capacity to be able to deliver programs. We talked about the financing, et cetera. And they were able to go around and listen to see, how do I get a contract through BPS? How do I get a contract through community-based partner for community schools? And so we had small, medium and large organizations that came out. And we continue to work with some of the smaller agencies, now this was pre-COVID, but working with some of the smaller agencies to help them to frame what it is that they're looking at doing, what the cost of their opportunity would be and the kinds of things that they would need to have in order to be a successful vendor. So we have done that. I think we can do more of it and we will continue to do more of it.
Yes, please, please, we need continual outreach to broaden our reach and increase the diversity and, and equity in the community. So thank you.
Is, next, is Hope J. on the line?
No.
Okay. Well, I would like to conclude by saying, first of all, I would like to just take a closer look into the food distribution. I know that due to the COVID situation, you know, that, that we afflicted upon, that we have a lot of hungry families out there and a lot of things called email board members about, you know, food distribution. And this district has done a wonderful job of helping with the food distribution throughout the COVID virus throughout the summer when education wasn't prevalent, only, only have summer education until today. So I know we had 28 sites that was giving out food distribution, but also let's keep a lookout on our, on our academies. I don't know how it can apply virtually, but just to make sure these families that they need, and we can help meet their needs in nutrition and food distribution. Also, I agree with Paulette Woods and Sharon Bell's comment about growing our community vendors. I like the, also I like the ethnics that's involved here and our community partners with Say Yes and, and the hiring process. And our, our black and brown kids get to see more kids like them, more people that look like them and more leaders that look like them. So continue to be leaders in that route. Also, I would like to see our, our CLRI department has adopted to our community schools also and their programs are initiated also because I don't know about anybody else, but we had a lot of parents saying that due to the virtual learning and working with their children, they became interested in education themselves. A lot of parents are saying they'd like to know more about the CLRI department and, and the goals. And a lot of parents, they want to go back to school now. So maybe you have a big push on college education, GEDs at school. So something this COVID has transformed our, our community to where we now are looking for education for everybody. So, so kudos to this team here from Buffalo Public Schools and administrators for putting together this plan that that really opened the eyes of many and more people and light them. And also the CTE program, how did that adapt to the CLR program? We could not, send that back in the email. I know you don't have a lot of time right now. I know you don't have a lot of time right now due to time constraints. But I also have to say, I'm very interested on November 7th for the U.S. Science Exploration Day. I'm a big science geek myself, so I'm very interested in that. And here on the PowerPoint, you have to register, is that true?
Yes, yes. So you would open that link to register?
Yes. So I just want to agree, I know that's the biggest thing that's coming up. So we can push that registration link out to everyone to make sure that we can get more people involved. And I definitely, if God willing, I'll be involved also. And also, just to know a little bit more about the virtual learning and support centers, what's going to be detailed in there, what classes or courses are going to be in there, what age groups, did you just give a brief description of that? Because that's something new and I know that your program has been working very hard to get this together.
So the virtual learning centers are for students in kindergarten through eighth grade. So kindergarten through eighth grade. And each of the virtual learning sites, they are responsible for their programming. So the expectation is the children that are coming would come with their school schedule of the activities that they should be doing throughout the school day. Those that don't have devices, a lot of the sites have put in money to secure technology as well as to upgrade their internet service so they can provide services to the children. So we're checking on them to make sure that they're following the safety protocols and mandates, their attendance is intact, and any of the other reporting that they need to do. So we're doing professional development with them. We're doing things about, you know, health and safety kinds of activities. But each center is responsible for recruiting their children, providing the necessary protocols or appropriate spaces within their facility for children to engage in learning. And then, again, to follow what the teacher or the schools have identified as their schedule for the day. So the virtual learning centers are supporting the work that the children should be doing as a result of what they received from their homeschools.
This is Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to 4:00. Some are open later, some are providing additional evening hours and that's at each respective site. They make that determination.
Apology, transportation be given for this program or?
No, there's no transportation.
Okay.
No transportation, yeah. We'll conclude December 30th.
Mr. Hurd and board members, a very detailed PowerPoint and information from Say Yes was sent to all board members last week also. We will also make that available in the Board Docs library. So a lot of that information is in there. I believe there are 10 to 12 slides that Say Yes sent over through Dr. Karesti. So that was sent out to all board members last week, just for your reference.
Okay, thank you, sir. So as of right now, if there's not any more questions, Dr. Cash, I'll let you finish off.
Oh, no. You finish. I mean, I thought the presenters did a great job and this, again, continues to be one of our signature initiatives. And you're right, whether it's pre-COVID or COVID or any other circumstance, this is a place to gather and to bring all of the community together and advance our young people. So we got to keep it going, we got to keep improving. And that's the way, that's our model, we keep improving, always try to get better.
I have one thing in here, we would be, let's not mistake the honorable Crystal People Stokes for the funding that she provides for this initiative. It was under her, it is because of her that we're able to do this. And we cannot take credit for that. If she had not provided the money, we would not be here. But I just did not want this session to go out away without saying thank you to her. We all take a lot of credit for a lot of things, but if it was not for the fact that Crystal People Stokes brings that money to Buffalo, we would not be in this position.
Agreed, agreed.
Want to say that, and.
And what we've done to honor her even more is to actually use the money for the purpose it was intended. Many districts that receive community schools money across the state used it to close their budget gap and they didn't do the things that we're doing here in Buffalo. So thank you, Crystal People Stokes, for allowing us to do what you always wanted us to do with this money.
Thank you, thank you Majority Leader for your work that you're doing and continue on. We need you. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and close the Education Support Committee meeting. We have Finance and Ops up, Paulette Woods, leave it to.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Elizabeth. We got rid of Kat and Tan and Sandra, and so now we're back. Okay. Paulette Woods, are you ready to convene? Certainly am. Okay, this, we're opening up the session for Finance and Ops today. We have three items on our agenda, the 219-20 financial statements, and McCormick, which give us the good news about the increase in our surplus of the report, our CFO, the general fund update, the problems and the challenges we're facing this year. And then the third item on our agenda is a grants update, good news about. Identify funding that's available. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Cash. Can you hear me?
Yes. Darren, I don't see Jeff, is Jeff on? Jeff, are you there?
Jeff's right there.
Okay, good. So colleagues, tonight, under Finance and Ops, we have three topics. Chairman Woods just pointed out, we did send out a slide deck for your consideration last evening so that you could have a look at some of this information in advance to help. You begin to generate your questions and any comments that you would want to make. We have, we have new auditors this evening and Jeff is going to introduce them to you. They represent. They represent the firm of Lumsden and McCormick. And I believe Sarah Dayton and Seth Henard are here. So that's the first news that we'll hear about this evening. So Jeff, you and your colleagues.
Dr. Cash, if you could ask everyone to please mute because there's a lot of feedback. If everyone's approving you, if you're not talking or presenting, thank you.
Yeah, please. Jeff, ready?
Thanks, Dr. Cash. So we do have Sarah Dayton and Seth Henard from Lumsden McCormick. As you had mentioned, they are our new auditors. This is their first year that they've done our financial statement audit. And certainly it was a unique year and they'll, you know, they'll kind of go over that. Now, a little bit different, they have a little different approach than a prior auditor. So they actually put together a PowerPoint presentation which was sent to the board earlier. You should see it on your screen now and they'll, they'll go over, you know, this presentation as a summary of all the documents. The actual, the whole financial statement package that gets put together encompasses several, you know, several aspects, several documents. They're really going to summarize it here in this presentation. And, you know, I also want to thank, and I'm not sure if she's on yet, but Julie Carbone, the district's controller, that was a role that I started at when I was here. You know, it was really the key district point person in terms of trying to coordinate all this. And certainly it was a challenging year just with COVID and so forth. And I'll go a new auditor, so we kind of have to, have to learn about each other. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to go over her presentation. And I think board members will probably notice that my, the first part of my presentation is really going to be redundant after this presentation. So, you know, most of your answers or most of the things that I would go over will be gone over by the auditors. So thank you, and Sarah, if you'd like to start.
Hi, everyone, thanks, Jeff. Good evening, nice to see you all. As Jeff mentioned, we're going to try to go through this in summary form just because governmental financial statements are extremely lengthy. So we thought it would be helpful to just go through this summary report for you. And whoever has the slides, we can go to the next one, please. So you hire us to perform an audit, you hire us to render an opinion on your financial statements, that's the main point. So we issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's a clean opinion, meaning that we opine to say that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's what you're hoping for when you get your audit. There's two other reports also included within the financial statements themselves. They're towards the back of the financial statements. One, in accordance with government auditing standards, which you, as a school district, are required to have an audit under those standards in New York State. It's also known as Yellow Book standards and there were no issues with findings under those standards. And then the third report is in accordance with Uniform Guidance. And this is what is called a single audit that you're required to have because you received federal funding in excess of $750,000. And I'm quickly going to just hand it over to Seth for a minute so he can cover that portion.
Hey, can you hear me? My, there's been really bad feedback. So the single audit portion that Sarah talked about, you have $88.2, $88.3 million in federal grants. So those are required to be tested separately as a, basically called a separate audit of those for internal controls and compliance purposes of the federal government kind of outlines certain things that we're required to look at. So you don't get many of that money through the federal government directly, but you get it through New York State, but it's still a federal grant, that's where that money originates from. Last year, there was $92.5 million, so you had a slight decrease of about $4 million. Overall, fairly consistent, about 4% decrease. Half of that was actually a decline in the child nutrition cluster, which even though you got more money from the CARES Act because of the post-March shutdown, you got more CARES Act money in the child subsidies. Sarah will talk about that more later on, but out of the 88 million, we tested four programs because you had a finding in the prior year. The prior year finding had to do with payroll certifications as employees work on these grants and their time is charged based on an estimate of how much time they spend. There was a finding last year of the prior auditors of what they wanted for documentation. So we audited those same programs that were tested last year, that's what was required of us. Those were the Title I grants, the school improvement grants, now the Title IV, Student Support Academic Enrichment Program and the Special Education Cluster. So those four programs together all totaled $50.6 million or 57% of the total grants. In testing all of those in controls and compliance, we had no findings. So that's good news, we had no, the finding that was there last year where we had sufficient documentation to support the requirements. So they said you're a high-risk entity because you had findings in the past, which means we have to test this 40% of the total 88 million. So we tested 57%, that's sufficient. You'll also be a high-risk entity next year because you have to have basically two years without any material findings. So we'll test programs next year. We do have the new program coming next year, which is the stabilization funds, which is the CARES Act, which has been basically the state is reducing their state portion of aid, but it's being replaced by state staple, or federal stabilization funds. So that will be subject to single audit testing next year, it'll be a big component of the audit. But then there's also the data collection form, which is basically just an online submission of the same information that is audited and hopefully submitted the next few weeks.
So moving on from that, we also have an extra classroom statement of cash receipts and disbursements. So this is all of your student clubs. That statement is summarized by school, that would have been part of your draft packet as well. You had about $1.1 million in cash sitting in those student clubs at June 30th. About a million dollars flowed in and out of the clubs during the year, which for comparison, you actually had about $1.7 million flowing through in 2019. So that's a function of the students not being able to obviously fundraise and then use those funds as they normally would for their activities. There's a contract for excellent agreed-upon procedures engagement. So you do receive about $13.6 million in state funds that are for these specific purposes. And there is an agreed-upon procedures report where there's certain requirements that you need to meet and that gets filed with the state. We had no issues and no findings in that agreed-upon procedures engagement. And then after I go through the numbers, Seth will go through the communication with those charge for governance and the management layer. So on page two, this is where we start talking about the fund basis financial statements. And I'll break between each section in case anyone has any questions. But you only see this really once a year. Your financial statements actually show two sets of books. They show a fund basis and then a government-wide or a full accrual set of financial statements. The fund basis is what you're used to seeing. That is how you budget and that is how you look at your expenditures, it's more of a cash basis. The government-wide basis, you only see within the financial statements each year and that kind of takes the district altogether as a whole, but it adds in some other pieces you don't normally see. So things like your payments on your debt, instead of those showing as an expenditure, the full amount of the debt is, shows as a liability and then the payments reduce that liability. Similarly, for your capital assets, your buildings and your equipment. On a fund basis, you see budgeted expenditures for those capital projects. On the government-wide statements, it's not an expenditure, it is an addition to your assets of the district. So I'll go through each basis separately and then I'll break between each, as I said, for questions. So on the next page, the next slide, is the general fund, fund balance, under the fund basis you're used to seeing. So as you're aware, your fund balance is broken out into various categories. These categories are created by a governmental accounting pronouncement, or GASB, into non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. So your non-spendable are just really amounts that can't be spent because they already have prepaid items or inventory. You can't use inventory to pay your bills, unfortunately. Restricted fund balance is the reserves that are created by law. And then assigned fund balance is amounts that you have authorized management to assign to particular purposes. So the largest change in fund balance this year was in designated for subsequent year, if you look down this list. Now, if you look at the bottom right, that is the change in fund balance in the general fund year to year. So you had an increase in fund balance of over $42 million this year. So that is net income in effect in your general fund this year. This is really a timing and COVID-related net income. I'll talk more about the specifics of that later. But you, in essence, took that money and you're applying to next year's budget. So you can see the designated for subsequent year line increased from $10 million to $50 million for next year. So where that additional fund balance is going is to be used to balance next year's budget. If we move on to the next slide, page three, this is fund balance for the general fund in total, but then all of the other funds, just to do a quick synopsis. So your capital projects fund, which is where you account for your capital projects, you had revenue coming in from Smart Schools Bond Act money, that state aid, of about $9.5 million. You also had other state aid coming in as a transfer from another fund of about $12.5 million. And then offsetting that was current year capital expenditures of $17 million. That $17 million was spent on Smart Schools Bond Act expenditures, which is really technology purchases, as well as your Phase IV project. So at the end of the day, you had an increase in fund balance in capital projects that will continue to go down as you spend on those projects. Fund balance in the debt service fund went down about $1.7 million, but you had transfers, net transfers in of about $90 million. And then you spent $92 million on your required principal and interest payments on your outstanding debt. So you see that fluctuation, just looks small, but there's a lot of money going in and out of that fund. just looks small, but there's a lot of money going in and out of that fund. The only other fund of significance to really point out here is the School Food Service Fund, so this is where all of the cafeteria funds are. Your revenue was actually relatively consistent with the prior year, so your sales were obviously down because you didn't have students purchasing lunches for the last three months of the school year. But you had, you still had federal and state aid that you were receiving. And then offsetting that, and really where you saw the savings, was a reduction in expenses this year. So you ended up with an increase in fund balance of $1.4 million in that fund, which offset a loss in that fund of about $1 million in the prior year. So the other funds had really no significant activity. So at the end of the day, your total fund balance for all funds is just under $324 million. Any questions on fund balance before we move on? Okay. And you can ask later too, if you want. Yep. Was there a question?
I'm sorry, page number two?
Yes.
Have a question. Something wasn't clear, and I didn't see it, but it wasn't clear. It dealt with, can you go back a page? Okay, so when I looked at this school budget equity, what was that?
This has to do, and Jeff might want to talk more about it, but this has to do with the education law changes to the transparency and the breakout of costs by school. So there was an additional amount assigned for costs, I believe, or to balance and equalize some of the costs between schools?
Yeah. Hi, Mrs. Kotman, this is Jeff. So we added last year, during last year's audit, because there was also a surplus last year, we did set aside in assigned fund balance $5 million for the school budget equity. And what it is, it has to do with the transparency reporting requirements that we have, where the state requires us to provide our budget for each school, and then it does calculations. And at one point, they were talking about making us, you know, making school districts reallocate funds between schools based on their equity calculations. So we decided to put something out there in the assigned fund balance in case that actually happened. But, you know, potentially used for that equity based on the state, or also based on equity needs that we identify, you know, through our own budget process.
We didn't use it last year, right?
No, it's still, it's still in, this amount is still in the, in the fund balance, correct.
Okay, so it can be used to provide courses for the children? You're just going to sit $5 million there for 19 and 20 and 21? How was it just sitting there and not being used, is my question?
Well, again, the reason it was put out there was because of the state law changes, and we were, it was uncertain of whether or not the state was going to essentially force us to make changes in our budget. So we wanted to have funds available to be able to do that in compliance with the state.
But they didn't make you do it in 2019, right?
No.
So doesn't that money go back to the general fund?
It's in the general fund right now. This is, this is basically just a set aside of fund balance to be used for a particular purpose. So in this case, the purpose was, if the state had said we needed to make certain reallocations in our school budgets, we may find that we need to allocate additional funding above and beyond the budget in order to not, not have to make a reduction at one school to increase funding in another.
Right, I understand. We can talk about this at another time. But my concern is, it's been sitting there for two years, this is the second year, you haven't used it, okay? It's on that line, we didn't use it in 2019, and it just seems like there should have been some additional money for us to do some more supports for our students with that money, particularly since it was there. So we'll talk about that. Okay, that was my question. That's what I really was asking, I wanted to know where that money, what that purpose of that money was for. Just going to ask.
Okay. If someone else has a question?
Lou Patruci, I just, under the, again, on slide number two, sorry, I was just wondering if, under capital projects and repairs, if the purchase of the field in front of the city honors is incorporated in that budget line, or is it incorporated someplace else?
Lou, the, the fund to purchase that field could come out of that line. It was not specifically set aside in there, but that is, that is certainly a purpose that it could be used for.
Thank you. So one other question, Jeff. So the money that you typically put back, we didn't spend it, it typically goes back in the general fund. What category is that under?
So typically, it would, it would fall under the unassigned fund balance. Anything, because anything that is either, if it's not, if it's not something that's restricted, and it's not something that we assigned it to a particular purpose, the, basically, it would fall into the unassigned fund balance category.
So do you know how much it was for last year? I mean, for this year that we did not use as far as for, for staffing and for, for our schools because of COVID?
They'll get to that in the next couple of slides, but on this slide, though, the change, the bottom line change of $42.3 million, that's the amount in the general fund that was the overall surplus. So we had predicted back in March that it was going to be about 30, based on the closure, it ended up at 42. And then most of that 42 was rolled into the increase for the designated for subsequent year. So that, basically, the surplus in the 1920 year was rolled into the deficit for the next year to allow us to fund a deficit budget. But I'll kind of stop talking, because some of that'll, that'll be clearer as we go through the next few slides.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
One last question. Going back to, going back to capital projects and repairs, all our projects, it seemed kind of slow because there's not really much development going on within our schools. But for repairs, is all our money's coming from this past year? Or if it exceeds that, will it come from someplace else, the general fund, or how does that work?
Now, typically, we fund repairs on an annual basis in the general fund. Or if it's a repair that's related to a larger project, it might be part of the capital fund. What this capital projects and repairs is for, is for unique or large items that perhaps come that are above and beyond what we would normally budget for. So, you know, certain things like a field repair, we, you'll notice in there that the amount went down by $1 million this year, and that is because we've been allocating $1 million a year for the last several years for a painting project in our, in various schools. So it's essentially for anything that is above and beyond what would be the normal allocation in the budget, is what that capital projects and repairs could be for.
Reason why I asked was because of the bed in high school steps in the front has been roped off for two years now, we made some suggestions about that, and I don't know if that's incorporated in here or not, but it's been skating holes in there that was, that need to be looked into, and I believe the district were looking into it, far as a couple emails that went back and forth. So is that included in this project here, into the, to the 15 million, or 17 million?
That, so I don't have all the details, but that sounds like something that would be part of our capital projects fund, that there is probably a separate project already, already in design stage, or maybe it's in process. I'm not familiar with that one, but that would, that would not be a, that would probably not be a general fund item, that would actually be in the capital projects fund.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're up to page four. So just forward, thank you, one more. So the next, this slide and the next slide, we just tried to break out, this is focused now just on the general fund. And you can see, you know, your different revenue sources and the tower that is state aid, that obviously provides most of your revenue stream. But you have totals there by year, so the contribution from the city you can see is consistent year to year. And we just did three years on this page. Sales tax, you see a slight decrease per 630 2020. That is unusual to have the decline in sales tax, you haven't seen a decline in sales tax in over a decade. And it's small, but I would anticipate a much more significant decline affecting your revenue for 2021 because of COVID-19. State aid had an increase mostly because of foundation aid and that formula. In, I'll get into it a little bit more when I talk about general fund expenditures, but some of this is reimbursement based. So for example, you get transportation aid based on your transportation spending. So you saved a significant amount of money in 2020 because of not busing and not having those payments. However, the other side of that is you will not receive as much transportation aid than in 2021 because of your reduction in expenditures in 2020. The same will continue to happen then in 2022 because of a lack of busing in your current fiscal year. So keep that in mind as well, you will see a reduction. And then Seth mentioned briefly that the education stabilization fund and that federal funding from the CARES Act, so your allocation is just under $30 million, which is great. But unfortunately, your state aid is being reduced by that exact same amount. So where you're going to see about a $30 million increase in federal funding specific to that grant, you're going to see an equal reduction in your state aid because of that. So you can use it for the same purposes, but I just want you to be aware of that because you are getting the extra federal funding, but it's just offsetting other money you will no longer receive. Your other income, you can see, had a bit of a fluctuation in 2019. Other income is just really anything else. So refunds, Medicaid reimbursements, E-rates, those things are all included within other income. In 2019, with the switch of your health insurance to the, to the more traditional self-insurance, you had a one-time premium equivalent refund last year of somewhere around $15 million. So that's the reason for that spike in 2019. You can see that the 2020 number is much more consistent with 2018. The next slide continues with the general fund and its general fund expenditures. So you can see these towers, the first two are really just people, so salaries and benefits. You hired 720 new employees in 2020. You also had 586 employees leave, either terminations, retirements, et cetera. So although you had a net increase in employees because of those retirements at higher salary scales in accordance with your contracts, and hiring newer employees at a lower rate, that actually resulted in a cost savings of about $4.7 million in salaries. In addition, because of the coronavirus, you did not hire and pay as many substitutes. So you saved about $2.7 million in, in salaries that you paid the prior year for substitutes. So because of that, you can see your salaries are almost exactly the same as the prior year. Now, the people who stayed, obviously, your other employees would have, would have received their contractual rate increases. So there is still an increase in salaries, but much smaller than what you would have seen otherwise, and what you would have seen if it wasn't for the pandemic. On the employee benefit side, retirement systems is your contributions to the New York State Teachers Retirement System and the New York State Employees Retirement System, TRS and ERS. The amounts that you contribute are percentages of salaries, and those rates are set by New York State. You have no control over what you fund into those pensions. For the teachers' retirement system, the rate actually declined in 2020, it was 8.86% of salary, as opposed to 10.62% in 2019. So that's the reason for that decrease. The rate is going up to 9.53% for 2021, so you will see a bit of an increase again in those contributions next year, your current fiscal year. The other employee benefits are health insurance, and then payroll taxes and all other benefits, that includes your workers' comp in there. You can see that those were all very consistent year to year. The charter school payments were relatively consistent, up about 4%. There was an increase in students, as well as special education students, as well as an increase in tuition rates. Contractual and other is where you see the biggest change because of the pandemic. So that is where transportation costs are. So you saved almost $14 million because of the lack of busing. You also saved vehicle fuel costs, bus fuel, obviously, and you saved on some utilities, you saved on classroom supplies. So all of those savings really flush out in that contractual and other line, which is the reason that you had almost an $18 million decrease in expenditures for 2020. So that is where the additions then to your fund balance really, really came from and fell out in the current year. Any questions on either of the general fund pages? Okay. So the last page of numbers.
It looks like we have a hand raised, but I'm not sure who it is.
Sorry.
Looks like we have a, oh, okay, the hand's down, never mind.
Okay. All right. The last page of numbers, then, the next slide, page six. I mentioned the two bases of accounting. So this is that other basis that you only ever see in the financial statements, and this is where you see the actuarial estimates as well of the pension and other post-employment benefits or OPEB. So I'll go line by line, and I'm going to go to the pension and OPEB line last, just to spend a couple more minutes on it. So keep in mind, this is the district as a whole. So current assets, so this is the assets, this is the cash, and basically state and federal aid and grants receivable for the district as a whole. So it includes everything in the general fund, as well as any receivables for aid for your projects, and then receivables for all of your grants as well. So the increase there from year to year is really just a function of that net income. So it's almost identical to that fund balance increase, but it's really the district as a whole. But you had an increase in cash as a result of your current year reduction in costs, basically. For capital assets, so this is your land, all of your buildings, all of your equipment, net of depreciation. So you had $19 million in additions this year, most of that was those capital projects I mentioned, the Smart Schools Bond Act, and then the Phase IV construction, offset by nearly $80 million in depreciation expense. So there's estimates of what the useful lives are of all of your assets, for example, 50 years for buildings. And so each year, you depreciate a piece of all of your assets. So the reason for the net decrease is because the depreciation exceeded what you spent on additions this year. Move down to the liabilities, and then back up to pension and OPEB. Long-term liabilities is comprised primarily of your bonds payable. This is including the bonds that are paid through the City of Buffalo, as well as the estimate of accumulated sick and vacation time or compensated absences for your employees, and some other long-term liabilities like workers' comp, which is self-insured as well. The decrease there year to year is because of current year print. The decrease there year to year is because of current year principal payments on your debt. So you spent sixty-seven million dollars repaying the principal portion of that debt. The remainder that I mentioned before of the, to the ninety-two is the interest payments. Other liabilities would be accounts payable and accrued liabilities at year end. So, so expenses that are related to the year ending June thirtieth that weren't, whose bills weren't paid in essence until after year end. The reason for that decrease is, is due to that decrease in the teachers' retirement system contribution. That amount is always outstanding at year end because it is, it comes out of your, your state aid payments in the fall. So the recorded and payable was lower because that contribution rate declined. If we go back up to pension, OPEB, and deferred resources. So in your case, this is comprised of two things. One is the actuarial estimate of what you owe for your employees to the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system. So the actuaries hired by the state at the state level calculate their estimate of what those amounts are, and then that is net of funding into the system. So that's net of all of your contributions. So the teachers' retirement system is actually just over a hundred percent funded. The employees' retirement system is about eighty-six percent funded. So these are the estimates, and they're going to change every year based on a multitude of factors, including mortality rates, the discount rate, the investments in those plans and, and their projection of how those investments are going to do versus how they actually do. So those numbers change each year. Management receives information from the state to book those liabilities. So that is just your share based on your employees of those pension calculations and liabilities. The larger piece and really the primary number included here for you is your other post-employment benefits. So you, you hire your own actuary to calculate that liability to the district. So this represents the five thousand employees and four thousand retirees who are eligible for health insurance at retirement. This is the actuarial calculation of what that liability is to the district. That number also will change based on the discount rate. And in your case, this year, the health insurance, the future cost of health insurance, their estimates went down, so that reduced your liability. But then the discount rate, which they're required to use, went down and that increased the liability. So you actually had a net increase of about two hundred and nineteen million dollars in that liability just for other post-employment benefits this year. I heard a ding. Is that a question? No? Okay. So what does this mean? Obviously, there is a significant liability to the district for, for all of these promises for health insurance, which, you know, started decades and decades and decades ago and, and can't, you know, easily just be negotiated out of contracts because people like for health insurance benefits at retirement. So as a result, you have, you know, we looked at the fund balance page earlier. You're not allowed by law, there's no reserve created that really allows you to fund that liability. So you have just an amount assigned by management, which is allowed, which is just under fifty million towards other post-employment benefits. But your cost each year is about sixty-one million dollars to the district is what you're paying for these benefits. So the payment you're seeing is part of those expenses in the general fund, in, in your benefits. But this actuarial calculation only shows up in these government-wide statements, so you only see it here. It causes this deficit in your net position when you look at the district as a whole. So that two million, two billion, four hundred and ninety-one million deficit is just solely a function of that other post-employment benefits liability to the district. Do you have any questions on this page? Okay. Feel free to ask at any time if you change your mind on anything. So I will turn it over to Seth to cover the other two reports within the financials.
So on page seven, this is the summary of the communication with those charged with governance. So in your, your documents that we sent out drafts for, it's a three-page letter. And basically what it gets down to is if we had any major concerns or issues or really major things the board should made aware of, it would be in that report. So this is the summary of some of those items. The first one being significant accounting practices. So there were no changes in the accounting standards. It's fairly common recently that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board updates accounting procedures pretty much annually throughout the year, but there were no changes that affected the board this year. So it's all consistent with prior year. The accounting estimates, something to be important to kind of make note of. So the example I like to use is that when we're performing the audit, we can easily audit something like cash where we can ask for bank statements, ask for bank reconciliations. We can basically tie out those cash amounts to the dollar. However, most of the numbers that Sarah went through are not that easy to audit. So they are significant estimates that are involved in those amounts. So they're listed here. The new one for this year is the collectibility of amounts that are receivable from New York State. So included in those receivables this year are reserves that management has placed on those receivables, which include about three point five million dollars in the general fund and five point two million dollars in the special aid fund. So in total, the receivables were reduced by eight point seven million dollars because back in late August, New York State decided they wanted to say they withhold twenty percent money that they were supposed to pay you for costs incurred prior to June thirtieth. Most of that was on state excess cost aid, general fund aid. And they said, you know, we're going to withhold twenty percent of this. And then I think there was a large uproar. And they kind of backed off that in maybe a few weeks ago and said, well, we're not going to withhold that twenty percent. But then we, we've heard from other districts that they, their payments were still withheld by twenty percent. So what that all basically means is, you know, the state has fiscal problems of their own, so we're really unsure of how much they're going to be able to keep providing state aid. And the collectibility of that is just, is uncertain, it's in question. So there is reserves placed on that just in the chance you don't receive all that money that you were supposed to receive from last year. The other items listed there, Sarah went through most of them already, so I won't get too much detail. The capitalization and depreciation of capital assets, that's mostly just estimating the useful lives of your, your equipment and buildings. All your accruals of health insurance, workers' compensation, and constant absences, mostly that's based on the, the estimate of costs that have been incurred, not reported with health insurance or workers' compensation. Sarah went through all the TRS and ERS net pension systems, all those actuarial differences and discount rates, all the stuff she went through. They're all the big estimate. So if one number changes by half a percent, it has millions of dollars of impacts on the government-wide statements. Or you have no control over that, that's just something you have to report based on what the state does. Again, the OPEB, you're, you know, your two billion dollar liability is very susceptible to estimates and has huge changes. So basically what it is, is we, we audit a lot of these numbers based on estimates. We talk to management to get their, you know, basically feel comfortable with what they're estimating is correct and makes sense, given the information that we have. The footnote disclosures, if you look at your actual financial statements, which are about fifty pages long, some of the more important notes to kind of direct you to, if you want to look at them, is note number five is your long-term liabilities. So that will explain your eight hundred and twenty-eight million dollars of debt. It explains the details behind it, the interest rates, and then the payment terms of how many years you have to pay those things off. Notes number six and seven, get into the pension plan at OPEB, and it shows all the different assumptions that Sarah was talking about, so you can kind of see what those assumptions were. Note eight is the risk management, this talks about your self-insured health insurance or first compensation plans. Then note number nine, or note ten is new this year. Their risks and uncertainties note talks about COVID. It basically just says, you know, because of COVID and the uncertainty of what's going to happen, you know, there could be changes with new costs, with PPE required, there could be reduction in the state aid. So it's just a note informing readers that it's really unprecedented times, you're not sure what's going to happen. So it'd be, you know, it could change the financial situation of the district pretty quickly based on what happens. Other items, like I said, if there's any difficulties, the performance in the audit, we let you know about it. We didn't have any difficulties. It was basically a hundred percent remote. We were granted access to log in remotely to your accounting system, look at invoices electronically. So that really was very helpful that we were able to perform the audit without much interruption from that standpoint. There were no uncorrected misstatements and no corrected misstatements. What we see from management was correct. We had no disagreements with management. The manager representation letter is open. We have to send that to Julie and Jeff to sign. But what that's going to be is it's a, at least a signed document they provide us that says the information that they sent us was correct. They didn't try to hide anything from us. There's not any legal liabilities outstanding that they're aware of, that make us aware of, just stuff like that. It's a standard letter for every audit. Required to be made aware of any consultations with other independent accountants, which we're not aware of any. And then as any other major issues, we will tell you about if we had any, but we don't have any concerns about those items. The next slide, page A is the last one. It's the management letter. So this is where we kind of give you any internal control comments. So the first part is there's no material weaknesses. That means there were no internal control findings that we feel would be, you know, a major issue to the financial accounting and financial operations of the district. Now, we did have a couple of minor comments just to make you aware of interest on reserves. We noticed that there were a few reserve accounts that didn't have interest allocated to them, and it was made known where it was that since the city of Buffalo really holds on to a majority of your cash accounts, it's really their discretion what they want to provide interest to you on your own cash. And so that's a kind of an ongoing discussion, it seems like, with the city going back years. So more money you can give for interest because it is your funds would be better. Extra classroom activity funds, that's all of your student clubs. We did look at last year's management letter, and there was a comment based on this topic in the past. There wasn't our comment, so we can't really dig into it too much. But we were provided the auditors, work papers that generated that comment last year. Based on our testing this year, there were improvements over the extra classroom clubs. Most of our comments were because of missing signatures on receipts and disbursements that were occurred after March. So there was no student involvement because they were in school. That was a big reason for it. And there were a lot of student ledgers that are required to be maintained that we were not able to get access to because they're, again, not in schools and not available to be provided. But in general, I think there was an improvement over the extra classroom activities. And then just a reminder comment that the only thing that should be included in extra classroom are clubs that actually have student involvement. So I think that's another thing that's been being worked on by management. It's been improved over the years and it is continuing to be a, a hard process to, to be all the different schools on board and make the adjustments necessary for that. Final comment is some minor internal control points. With payroll register certifications that get signed by Jeff and the superintendent, there's some, this is more of a paper-based process, so we're aware of this now, more of an electronic process back in May. So that's basically all you can resolve to kind of improve the efficiencies and make that a little more, better documentation going forward. And then we talked to management about the vendor listing review, making sure that the vendor list of the board is up to date and is cleaned up of all duplicate vendors. This was less of a chance of a mistake or issue going forward. The final comment is informational points. Those are the GSB accounting standards, which are going to be affecting the district in the upcoming years. We'll work with management on those, implement those. GSB eighty-four, eighty-seven are, have been around for a while, so I think everybody's aware of those and how it's going to impact the district. Then GSB ninety-six is newer. This is just new fairly recently. It's effective for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and will help implement that if there's any major impact on the district.
So that wraps up what we have, but I did just want to say Seth, Seth mentioned the hundred percent virtual audit. I mean, that's not something we normally do either. So I know, you know, there's obviously at the district level been a huge adjustment for, for all of you and your, your employees and your students. So this was an adjustment for us and one also that management had to adjust to, not only new auditors, but new auditors who couldn't come into the district. So I just want to thank them for their assistance. The access, the read-only access to the software system, the financial system and those invoices, I think, was a huge help as well. But they were very accommodating to us in all of our numerous questions and phone calls that resulted because of how we had to perform the audit this year. So with that, I will open it up to any other questions.
I just want to commend you on a very thorough and informative presentation. You went over a lot of areas that, I think we've ever had a presentation that explained exactly every area. So I want to commend you on that, and I see we have a hand. I see we have a hand up from our board president.
Yeah, I have just a question. I'm curious if you were able to verify our funds, that they exist. Since the city of Buffalo holds those funds, were you able to verify or was there a letter or something that?
We, yes.
That the funds were there, is my question.
We did confirm those balances with the city, yes.
And do you have it in writing?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another hand up, okay. I can't tell who it is, though.
I have my hand up, Paula, it's Jen.
Go ahead, Jen.
On the lines, obviously, this is a huge concern of the board. So again, with where the city, your comment about, you know, making sure that we are able to charge interest on our money. Do you have, I don't know if this is what you do, but do you have any advice as to how we can, you know, legally go about this without having to do the back and forth? I know it's one of your comments, so I'm just asking what would be, you know, your suggestion for us moving forward because this is a, this is a sticking point for us.
We did talk to Amanda a bit about this, and I'm not sure that we have a great answer. We, you know, the, the information that, or the laws that create those reserves, unfortunately, they just say any interest earnings should, must be allocated to the reserves. They don't say that those funds have to be in interest-bearing accounts and that that money then is, is added to the reserve. So, so there's not, there's not something, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but there's not something I can point to in the law that gets you there. I think, though, just from a matter of, you know, they're holding over three hundred million dollars of your funds, your reserves are a small portion of that. If, if, you know, it would make sense that the interest that they are presumably earning on some of that money would be allocated to the district because that is based on earnings on your cash. I, you know, from our perspective, the only thing that we can offer up is discussions, but unfortunately, I don't have a, I don't have any, anything that helps as far as education law or general municipal law that points to how that, how that would happen.
I appreciate that. So you, you see the situation, right? Discussion, then you seem very matter-of-fact with the kind of like, in the same boat, like this just makes sense to do it a certain way. So I appreciate, and, and really, again, as President Condon mentioned, whatever is in writing would help further our discussions in making that a reality for the district. So thank you for really focusing on that and answering that question.
Thank you.
See any other hands up? Any other questions?
Any other hands up, any other questions?
I just have one more general question. So the money that's being held in reserves for some of these areas and have not been used in years. As we were talking, I think it was on page number two. Is that a common practice or does that money eventually stop being held in reserves? I mean, how many years do you hold something in reserves and don't use it is my point. And I'm just trying to figure out, because we're looking for, you know, we're constantly being told that we don't have money to provide resources for students, this district. But every time I'm looking at these reports, I'm seeing that money is just sitting there year after year after year. And I'm just trying to figure out, is this, am I missing something here since I'm not an accountant? Am I missing something here that we would allow 17 million to sit for, for three and four years under capital projects and repairs and not reduce that and move, and, and things like that? I'm just trying to figure out, is that a normal practice that you just let money sit for year after year after year? Is, is my question.
I'll answer and then maybe turn it over to Jeff if he wants to provide more insight specific to the district. It is, I mean, the point of reserves is that it's a long-term place to keep fund balance. And, and just like there's been, you know, this, this unusual, extremely unusual pandemic this year that has caused this cost savings in 2020, so can there be times when it happens the other way where there are additional costs that aren't necessarily planned for? So the point of reserves and the point of assigned fund balance is to have some sort of, I'll say, backup in place. When I look at your totals for the general fund, so that 265,990,000, that represents about 28% of next year's budget. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends somewhere between 20 and 30% of fund balance to, to be in fund balance year to year. So you're right, I think, generally where you should be as far as your total fund balance that is, that is maintained at the district level. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I just want to know how long this stuff sits around? Because we quote, we're such a poor district and we do not own our buildings. So that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, we don't, any of these buildings. Thank you.
I think the, the, as a percentage, it, because it's not that large, it wouldn't typically jump out at me as being a concern. Typically, I see, you know, five-year kind of averages of where these amounts are, even 10-year. I know you do have a four-year plan, so I think some of those usages have been in accordance with that plan. So I think there are some factors in place and I'll leave it at that in case Jeff wants to chime in.
Yeah, thank you. You know, the only thing that I'd probably add to it, you know, is that we've, you know, the, the district, I think over the last several years where we've had, you know, substantial state aid increases, some of, some of what, what's in here really is kind of allowing us to absorb some of the hits that I think we're going to be receiving over the next couple of years. In our four-year financial plan, we have deficits of, you know, we had deficits of around 200 million that we, that we're going to need to tackle. And that was really prior to, you know, the, the potential for 20%, up to 20% aid cuts coming from the state. So, you know, the, these amounts in here, you know, for the most part, I think are prudent to have. Again, the OPEB is, is a small down payment on a multi-billion dollar liability. You know, we're utilizing, you know, we're utilizing some of these other assignments based on what, what we had put in the four-year plan. And, you know, things, some of the restricted items, you know, like judgments and claims, I mean, that we've, with the legal team we have, we haven't had a lot of big ones. But if you went back several years, you know, there, there were some large settlements. And those types of things, you don't want to have to, you know, make a budget cut during the year. You know, we would utilize the judgments and claims, but we really haven't had substantial ones that we've had to deal with recently. So, you know, I think the, the fund balance, I think, puts us in a pretty good position to, you know, to start tackling some of the challenges that are coming over the next couple of years, and this year included, of course.
Terrence has a question.
Yes, I just have one question. The revenue that we may make from our CTE programs, REE programs, where does that fit in here at, and how do we estimate? If there's any.
Terrence, are you referring to revenue that we get from the state or reimbursement cost of the program?
Not from cost. If, if someone signs up for a program or pays for a program through a CTE, does that calculation, where does that fit in here?
Do you, or do you mean adult education?
Yes.
Okay, so adult education programs are almost exclusively grant-funded. So they, they don't show up in the general fund. But, you know, in the various grants, we have about 100 grants in total. And I believe pretty much all of the adult learning programs are, are, are grant-funded. You know, there, some of them are through the state, there's some federal. And then they also do receive our fee for service, that there's actually fees that are charged. But those all have their own individual grants that they have for them.
Okay, thank you.
Man, if we have, if we have no more questions on, if we have no more questions on this part, Superintendent, would you like to dismiss the, let the auditors go and Jeff can move to the next part about our 2020-21 budget?
Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah and Seth and Julie. I did want you to recognize Julie. I didn't know if all of you had ever met Julie Carbone before. She's doing an excellent job to get us to, to the point where, Sarah, you would agree that this is a pretty good audit performance, right?
Absolutely. They did, they were extremely knowledgeable and very helpful with our numerous questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
You have two, two portions remaining for this session. And we can handle it one of two ways. One is to just see if you have any questions about Roman numeral number two, for example. There are about 12 slides that were associated in the deck that we sent out last night. And if you have questions, you can start right in with, with that. Or you could have Jeff, who's certainly prepared to do so, go back through these slides. Many of these slides we've shown in prior work sessions with you around finances. And sometimes it's helpful for the community to continue to be educated around these important issues. And so if you'd like us to proceed and Jeff go back through these slides, just let us know. Chairman Woods, how would you like to proceed?
I'd like Jeff to walk us through that. I, I think this is very important because there are some challenges that he needs to point out to the board in his presentation.
Okay, no problem. So Jeff, Roman numeral two, if you could begin to go through, take us through those slides, please.
Okay, thank you. Mike, could you move the presentation to page eight, please? Okay, so some of these, these are some disparate slides, but they all, you know, they're, they're based on some questions we've, we've had and information that I think kind of all pulled together relative to, you know, this year and next year's and the challenges that we're facing. So one question that has come up a few times is, you know, what is the impact of, of our student counts? And I wrote in BEDS. So BEDS Day is, is, you know, the, the day, or I guess it takes place over a period of time where we do a snapshot of our student, of our, basically our student membership. And if that is down this year, which I know anecdotally, we may have heard some things like that. I know nationally, a lot of school districts are down, especially in the lower grades. What is the impact on state aid? So there's a lot of words on this slide, but essentially, state, most of state aid that is based on student counts is foundation aid. And foundation aid is based on what's called average daily membership, which is is the entire year. And, and the way that it works is we, we, we just filed our average daily membership for the 19, for, for the 1920 year, we just filed it two weeks ago. And essentially for, for last year. Now, the ADM, so our, our, our student counts in 2021 are not going to impact foundation aid this year at all. The, the membership, the ADM, basically has a one-third weighting. And it, and, because the, the foundation aid formula tries to smooth things out because attendance or membership fluctuates from year to year. But essentially, the, the membership, the ADM that we have in the 2021 fiscal year will start to impact our foundation aid formula next year. And then it will do that for three years because foundation aid uses a three-year average. So, so, you know, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to harm that by itself or not harm the formulas. But I think it's very important to understand that the state does not fully fund foundation aid to begin with. So if our student counts drop and our foundation aid formula drops, the, that doesn't necessarily mean that the amount of aid that we receive will drop or that it will drop in proportionate to, in proportion to it. The state only funds 85% of the calculated foundation aid. So if you, if you look at the foundation aid formula and did the calculation independently, you would come up with 642.4 million is what our foundation aid should be for the current year that we're in right now. If you go to the state aid run, we're only getting 544.2 million. So only 85% of foundation aid, calculated foundation aid is funded. The other issue or another issue is that foundation aid is subject to further reductions by the state. They, they did it this year and they did it 10 years ago during the last recession. If there is a, a gap at the state level, they'll put in essentially just a reduction in our state aid. They'll, they, they called it, this year, they called it the pandemic adjustment, that 29.6, 29.7 million. They, they just put that in as a, as a subtraction out of our calculated state aid. So kind of in a nutshell, we can't, we can't predict necessarily what, what the student counts are going to, you know, how they're going to impact foundation aid in the future because, because of these factors above. But over time, if students, if we lose students, that will lower the, that, that will ultimately, over time, lower the foundation aid we receive. I mean, that, that's, that's inevitable based on that. And I have a little sub-bullet in here just for, for everyone's information. Charter school pupils are also included in the, in the foundation aid formula. But their associated cost, you know, the tuition and services exceeds the foundation aid. And this is why, you know, one of my frustrations with, you know, when, when we hear that charter schools don't cost, you know, that the district saves money, no. Every charter school pupil earns us about $10,000 and then they cost us $13,000 plus in tuition, plus services on top of that. So while they are included in foundation aid, the revenue we receive is less than their associated costs. Other costs related to transportation and things like that are, are in, you know, they're in different areas. The next large bullet I have on here, just as a quick kind of recap on other things, most other state aid types operate differently. So transportation aid, we get a reimbursement of 87% of, of prior year transportation costs. So that's, that's a one-year type of thing. CTE, high-cost special education aid, they, they actually use prior year student counts and prior year costs to reimburse us. So it's not a three-year rolling average. Textbook, software, hardware, library, those use prior year student counts. Building aid is based on approved project schedules. So every one of these aid types is different because it has a different way of being calculated. But again, the, the foundation aid is based on member, on student counts, based on student counts using a three-year average.
Jeff, I just want to say that, that your bullet was very important because, you know, when we're trying to say that the charter schools are costing us so much money, we've had challenged to demonstrate, in particular, this Learn for Life says that school district gets to keep money and they get to keep a one-third of the foundation aid and state aid. And we really do need to be able to show them in $10,000 and they're costing us 13. We, we need your help on the ad hoc committee to make that case that the charter schools are endangering 36,000 students.
Yeah, understood.
Larry's hand is up?
Yeah, Jeff, I think that's, it's the first time I heard you break that down that, this way. And if you could just restate it and then, so, or I'm just going to ask to make sure I'm understanding it. So what, what I heard you say is that for every charter school student, it costs us about $13,000 per student? And then we get in aid from the state, $10,000 per student? So we have to find about $3,000 to cover the entire cost of a charter school student? Is that, is that correct?
Based on, yes, based on foundation aid. Now, there are other things, you know, this, this is only looking at the foundation aid side. So there, the, the overall relationship is much more complex because we pass through services, we pass through other costs, we get reimbursed for some charter school costs. But yeah, in, in a nutshell, if you take one average student and, and move them to a charter school, we will receive $10,000. That's roughly what, what we get per, per pupil in foundation aid. And then it will cost us 13, I forget what the exact number is, but it's over $13,000 for tuition. That's the simplest way of looking at it. Now, the other types of things that we have is that there's special education, like excess cost aid, things like that, that are, that are above that. But those are, those are based on actual, actual individual students and whether or not they have special ed and what the costs of those services are and, and, you know, grants and things like that. Also, building aid, you know, we receive building aid. It's not based on pupils, it's based on, on buildings. But, but yeah, the, the incremental change is, as I stated it, and the simplest way of looking at it is $10,000 in foundation aid per pupil and, and $13,000 plus in charter school tuition.
So it's correct to say then, when a, if a new charter school opens up, for every student that then attends that charter school, that will be an additional $3,000 per student cost that we need to cover as a district? At least, at least $3,000?
On its own, again, there, there are more complexities than that because we get like transitional aid where the state will reimburse some of those costs on a three-year rolling average after the fact. But, but yeah, that's, that's the, the quick, the quick math that, that I use for it is that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, you know, in, in prior memos and other presentations that I've done, I, I do have, you know, I, I do have in a lot of depth, you know, really a full analysis of the overall relationship in terms of the costs and revenues and, and things like that as well, that sometimes are helpful as well.
Man has her, her hand up, okay.
We have a situation here where the common council has
We have a situation here where the common council has tabled our resolution because of this issue. And so in order to get some clarity, I believe we need to draft a letter, explanation with common council in regards to this, that I'm concerned about. And we can, we need to talk to legal about is that you have a common council member whose wife is currently on the payroll of a charter school doing charter school. So there's, there is a conflict of interest there. We were cruising himself, and I'm talking about Wingo. He should be recruiting him, recruit, oh God, recruiting himself because he has a, a conflict of interest in regards to charter schools. This, whatever we do directly impacts his, you know, finances. So for him to be making judgmental calls, sitting in that seat is in violation of Robert rules of order as well as municipal law guidelines. So we're going to have to deal with this because there appears to be tendency to think that we are bad in charter schools. Let it be clear that the reason we can't have smaller classroom sizes, sizes, the reason we can't do, that the charter schools are doing is because they are taking money from the majority of the student population in this district. The result of that, it is costing this district money. And so for anyone to try to paint a picture that a charter school is bringing cash into this district is just not accurate to hear in that scenario. And it's interesting to note that this scenario is always voiced whenever board members are not able to respond. So I guess at this point, what you have is bully pulpit that are existing throughout the community as they try in one hand to receive money, backhand to receive money from the school, from off the back of the children of this district. And you have to ask, why would you in 2020 try to under, undermine the majority of the students in this district money? Something's not there. And I would appreciate upfront if you just admit who you are and who you work for and the money, money that you're receiving, so that everyone can understand who we're dealing with. So we're going to continue to address this issue. We are not going to sit here and let Buffalo Public Schools be annihilated because you have a couple of people who have bully pulpit that they feel that they can bully, bully elected officials. And in essence, they have never been able to get elected and positioned by some to the degree that they have a conflict of interest and will not recognize that in the name of the most high. Okay? So I'm sorry for my bull, my, my, I'll, I'll calm down now. I'll mute.
Jeff, please.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide. If we could move to slide nine, please.
Terrence, Terrence had a quick question. I don't think Paulette saw his hand.
Okay, a quick question, Mr. Pritchard. Looking at, okay, $3,000 plus, how much are we figuring for transportation on top of that? And the monies that, that try to return kids, maybe had a very modest amount last year. They turned to the money's not being repaid. So we get a calculation of the whole expenditure together?
Yeah, I mean, I, I probably have to follow up with maybe a little more detail, but I think, I think we spend somewhere in the range of eight or nine million in transportation for charter schools. And, you know, the, the charter pupils coming back and forth is not necessarily a cost per se in that. If a charter school student comes back to the district halfway through the year, then we should only pay for half the tuition. But obviously, the district has to have additional supports in place to absorb that student and, you know, make sure that they can meet those student needs, which, which from time to time might require a new room being opened or, or something like that. So it's, it, there's, there's a lot of complexities with it.
I imagine in food and in transportation, and once again, for that child, it'll come out our monies again. And, and like for food and education tablets, it doesn't necessarily, it's not a lot more money just coming out on top of that 3,000.
Yes, yeah, there, there, there are everything. So food services is a big one, transportation, special ed services, textbook, software, hardware, library materials. Also, the district provides special ed services from our own staff. So, so there are, there are many, many services. It's about, I think about 11 or 12% at least on top of the regular tuition. So whatever the tuition cost is, add at least 11 or 12, it might be even a little bit higher. And that's, that, that covers probably the bulk of the, the other types of costs that we have relative to those, those charter pupils. That's above and beyond what you see as just tuition.
That 3,000 can inflate far past 5,000 or 6,000.
It's, it's more complex than that, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, slide two B. This, this one, hopefully relatively quick one, just the, the CARES Act. We talked about that a little bit with the auditor. So the, the CARES Act was, is federal funding that is flowing through to the district. The state, in their adopted budget, reduced 29.6 million in state aid and backfilled it with federal aid. And that's really what these first two bullet, bullets are, are pointing out. The, this, the federal aid though, is a grant where the state aid cut was a, was general fund. So I'm, I'm letting, you know, kind of informing the board here that we are, you know, we'll, we'll probably have a budget amendment that I'll outline in the quarterly report coming up later in October, that is going to show how those, the, the funds and the associated costs related to what we originally put in our budget for the CARES Act are just going to be grants. It, it's a neutral change. It, it just goes from one funding source to another. But it is important probably to note that in, in 21, 22, those costs, which are basically employee-related costs of our early K to three teachers, are going to come back into the general fund unless the, unless we get additional federal aid to maintain that funding in a grant. So this is just one more little, one more little factor that when you have federal funding, it's only a, a very short period of time. So next year, we're going to either need to repeat that federal funding, another round of it, or, or the state would have to, it would have to increase aid, which looks difficult at this time, or we would have to find some other way of, of finding, you know, additional revenues to be able to cover these costs. So that's just one more factor that we're dealing with in terms of our, our multi-year planning for our budget. Next slide, please. Here's where we're going to talk a little bit more about charter schools. And this, this chart is, I don't have it updated yet for the 1920 year because I get that data directly from the state. But this is one of the, you know, one of the points that I think needs to be made relative to charter schools is that the overall, if you look at that chart in that blue line from 2007, 2008 through 2018, 19, we're essentially flat. The city of Buffalo has not gained any net students, nor have we dropped students. However, the orange line shows the charter enrollment, which is up 3,000, and the gray line shows district enrollment, which is down about 3,000. So, so we already know this. We have a flat student population, relatively flat over, over that period of time. More charter seats come in, district seats go away. And, you know, again, it's difficult because where do you take those seats from? Do we close schools? Do we, do we just shrink our schools? How, how do we accommodate that? So that's, that's really what this tells. We're, we're not in this situation where we have a growing city that can, that needs many additional, many additional schools. The, and the, going over to the left of this chart, we reached a milestone in September where for the first time, our combined charter school tuition billing was for over 10,000 students, 10,079 students. That's up 866 from June of last year. That's 25% of our K-12 enrollment. I suspect that that 10,079, if history repeats itself, that number will drop throughout the year, but this is a unique year. So things may be a little bit different, but that's, this is a significant milestone. You know, we're a quarter of the district's K to 12 students now. Cities K to 12 students are in, in charter seats right now. And, you know, again, the growth you can see in the chart and advocacy for a moratorium on new charters, I think is, you know, it's, it's more necessary now than ever before.
There's a hand raised. I can't see who it is though.
It's, it's, it's me, Paulette. Thank you. Jeff, I was under the impression, I was wondering if you could speak a little about that. Are schools that were redone through joint schools construction that we are unable to close them, which gives an additional wrinkle as to the limited number of schools that we have that option to fully close down?
That's a, that's a risk. That, that is certainly something that we would need to talk with the state about if we were ever to wish to close down a school and shutter a, a facility that we are currently paying debt service on. Because where that debt service is being reimbursed through building aid right now. And if, you know, you logically, you might, you might think, why, why would the state want to pay, why would the state want to reimburse us for a building we're not using? So that, that is definitely something that we would have to look at. I, I don't know that I have that exact answer and that might be something that would be negotiated with the state, you know, based on, based on many factors. But that, that is something that I've kind of understood from before, just from thinking about it logically.
Thank you, Jeff.
Well, I have a question, Jeff. Well, in regards to the enrollment piece going up, I'm being told that because some of the charters have opened their doors, we lost students or whatever. However, I, I, I just want to make sure we're not accepting students back during this time. In other words, kids that are being kicked out of charter schools, that we're not accepting them back during this period of time. Or, or are we? I'm trying to figure it out because they have a propensity to suspend children for a lot of reasons and they end up coming back to Buffalo Public Schools. Are we, are we seeing a trend? Have we been monitoring this or what? Because if it's not now, it will be within the next, about the time that the exams start, that we start seeing a, a dump of children out of charter schools to make sure that they can maintain. In addition to that, board members, we need to be informed that the state is holding us accountable for the two charter schools that we initially started, which is West Minister and Enterprise. And we have no say whatsoever on those schools, on those school boards. And I think that since the state is holding us accountable, that they are board-sponsored charter schools, that we need to seriously talk about getting position, getting, getting in position to have a, on those school boards, on their boards, not their school boards, but on their boards. But we have to talk about that because that's the serious thing for us to be, being held accountable for something that we don't have a voice in. Those are two schools that are struggling and have been struggling for the past 10 years. And the state, as you will remember, told us basically that we should close those schools down last year or the year before last, and we did not. And so we're going to have to have a serious talk about the failure of charter schools in Western New York. I think the parents need to know what's going on in these charter schools, that the state would be looking at us to, the Buffalo School District to step in and start having more control over school, of charter schools. So we're going to have that conversation and I'm putting that out there for those that are monitoring this meeting so that they can understand what's going on in this district. Okay? We really need to make sure of that. So Jeff, it's really nothing for you to answer. It's just that if, if they're dumping children again, we need to have a report and we need to report what schools are sending kids back during, during the virus. We need to have a, a report on our website. Transparency, I think is huge in this, in day and age. And the fact that as I'm doing my research and I'm going on New York State Ed's charter school website, I'm finding all these schools that have not met minimum requirement in this district that are charter. There are only four so far that I've seen that have met it. So we're giving away money to people who don't even allow us, our parents to have a voice in anything that's going on. So we're going to have some good conversations about what's going on with this charter school game.
Sharon, you mentioned, Sharon, you mentioned West Minister. What was the second charter?
Enterprise.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
President, you said, you request that we have the number of students that charter schools send back on the Buffalo Public School webpage?
What school? I think we should do that on, on, on a monthly basis so that people, we can have some transparency. We can talk more about it, but I think we need to start showing what is going on with these private, privately-run institutions in our community. We need to show that. Okay, timeout. Timeout for them not having special ed children. Timeout for them not having English as a second language children. The only schools that I'm seeing currently that are, are excelling, it would be interesting to note, is that the schools have a lower percentage of Ls, special ed, and African American students. This is going on in Buffalo as we die, as we die, small cuts over a, a five-year period, six-year, year period. We have to do something about this, the destruction of this district. The last charter school that was approved through SUNY, the person didn't even know one person's name in Western New York. However, I'm being told that they're about to get on payroll. So it's interesting how things are going on in Buffalo. So we're going to, we're going to play the game. I got a bully pulpit too. It's the board meeting every, every once a month. So when we're, these people that are out there bullying people because they're trying to protect Buffalo Public Schools, then, then, then the games are on. It's timeout. I'm just sorry about this. I'm sorry, Paulette. This is not your meeting. I'm sorry about what I'm saying. I'm sorry that I'm taking the time and it's getting late. So I, I think it.
Thank you for your comments though, Sharon. It's, this, this is a critical issue and we do need Jeff to work with us on the charter school ad hoc committee. But Jeff, continue because of the impact of the state reductions is, is up next and that's important.
Okay, next slide, please, number of page 11. And, and this is really just a recap of things that you, you probably already heard or you, you know, or that I've already updated in, in September, but we know a little bit more now. So again, the state began, made an announcement, they were going to start holding 20% on payments. We, we reserved for about 8.8 million last year of, of payments from last fiscal year that we think we may not receive. 3.4 million has already, we've confirmed has already been held. And whether or not that becomes permanent is, is subject to some future, you know, decision at the state level. The state is also withholding grant remittances on claims for, for reimbursement. So those are being held as well. Not, not the 20%, but I believe they're, they're actually holding up the reimbursements themselves. Subsequent to litigation and some of the, some published reductions at school districts throughout New York, the governor's division of budget did announce that in September, they would not be withholding 20% on payments to school districts. And I can report that we did receive 51 million in lottery aid that was due in September. So we received that in full. We do not know what October will hold, you know, but I, I know there were some, some communications or announcements that if they do make reductions on a school-by-school basis, that hopefully, you know, they would be allocated based on, on need, not necessarily just a flat across the board. Because obviously, a 20% reduction for us would be Because obviously, a 20% reduction for us would be devastating. And we know that the state, they require a significant federal aid to avoid reductions. You know, making reductions to, to us and to every other school district and municipality around. The last kind of bullets in here, all that really does is recap for us that a 20% reduction in general fund state aid is about 147.6 million. So you could cut that, and if it's 10%, cut that in half. You know, you'd be looking at 70, 73 million. 20% reduction in grant funds would be another nine and a half million. So that, that's, that's, that's what we're looking at if, if 20% reductions happen. If, if they're cut in half to 10, you can cut these numbers in half as well, and that's on a full-year basis. And, you know, we, we don't know exactly what mechanism the state will use to make reductions, but I suspect at some point they'll come out and, and, and do so, you know, do an adjustment like that pandemic adjustment where they say, we're, we're going to reduce your aid by X amount. And, and then everything else would be made whole, with the exception of that production amount. Next slide, please. So this slide, I probably show this slide every month, but it, again, it's just important to, to graphically show it. The green line, if you start from the left, the green line is growing, growing, growing. That's our, that's our aid. When you get to where the green and the blue and the purple come together, that, that shows, you know, how things have changed over the last several months, over the last six months, really. The blue line is where we predicted state aid would be last year at this time. The green line is where it was around the time that we adopted our budget. The purple line is what it could be if we have a 20% general fund aid cut. So that could drop it down and put us back to where we were in 2011, 12, 2012, 13. That, that's how big a cut that would be. And then in the out years, my assumption is that if we do receive a significant cut like that, the state will start to restore some of those. But again, that's, that's to be determined. Right now, we're still trying to figure out what 21, 2021's gonna look like. And in a couple of months, we need to start planning for, for 21, 22. And we're gonna need information, you know, we're gonna need good information from the state in order to be able to make decisions on how we're even gonna budget next year, let alone the things that we may have to do this year. Next slide, please. So this is just a chart, again, to show some long-term trends in staff and students. You've seen it before. I, I put it in most of my budget presentations. And the chart on the left, FTEs, that's our staffing. You can see the staffing in the general fund has really been steadily increasing since 2011, 12. And during that time, and especially once we got to about 14, 15, our student population began to drop. And a lot of that, again, has to do with charter schools. So our student population is dropping, and our, our staffing is increasing. There, there's reasons for that. Education bargain, additional mandates from the state, special education, multilingual, all these things require additional resources. And, and those are reflected in the table on the right-hand side, where I'm just showing a little snapshot of 14, 15 budget by bargaining unit, number of FTEs, to our budget in the current year. So that was the adopted budget. And you can see the change in FTEs, the change in staffing is roughly 671 in total. And, and that dollar amount is roughly about 55 million is what that, what that is on a budgetary basis. And you'll see in there, there's a couple bargaining units that are actually, that have actually shrunk over this period of time. So the actual growth, you know, the, the growth in the bargaining units that grew is actually higher, a little bit higher than 671. Again, this, this chart has, has been, you know, I've been updating it for several years as, as, you know, we've, we've, we've gone, you know, as, as more data becomes available to me. And, you know, it's certainly showing a trend that's, that's difficult to sustain. Next slide, please. This is another chart that was in our budget document. It's, it's a repeat. And what I have in here is I've, I've got, it's a stacked chart. So the general fund, food service fund, and grants fund, I have them stacked on top of each other. So if you look at the gray line, it says grants, but that's actually grants plus food service plus general fund. So you can, you can plot our, our FTEs, so our staffing, from 2007, 2008. 2008, 2009, it had reached a peak at about 50, probably about 56, 57, 100. And then where you see the orange, that orange bar, the orange vertical bar, that is when we had a recession and when state, state aid started getting cut. And then you can see that our, our student, or I mean, our, our staffing had to be reduced accordingly. Less revenue means there's less available funds for staffing, so staffing reductions were made during that period of time. And it, it bottomed out in 2011, 2012. It's been growing since then, rather consistently. But you will notice that in 2020, 2021, we already know we're in a recession. And actually, I guess the recession really started in 1920. Judging by what's happened in the past, and if I took this chart back to 2000, you'd see something similar that there's, you know, it, it's in all likelihood, there will have to be reductions in order to balance our budgets in, in the coming years. 15, if you could go to slide number 15, please. This one is, it's a kind of a two-part chart, and I'll, I'll go through it relatively briefly. Just, again, trying to frame up, it's not a, a proposal to do anything, but it, it's trying to say what, what would certain actions do? You know, you know, what would, what would certain amounts of reductions mean if we had to look at staffing reductions? And at the very top of the chart, I, I just want to show how our budget is really structured, that you'll see that number one, I got 1, 2, 3, 4A, and 4B. So 1 is salary, hourly, and employee benefits. That's half of our budget. We have a general fund budget adopted of 954.7 million. Half of that is salary, hourly, and employee benefits. That, that's the cost of employees. Then you have fixed costs. Those are things like retiree health insurance, our debt, charter school payments, agency payments, rent. These are things we really have no control over in the, in, in the short term. Number three is transportation. We do have control over the long term with transportation, but transportation, to the extent that our schools are open, when they're open, is dictated by the contracts that we have with First Student and, and the NFTA. And tho- those costs can be reasonably predicted based on those. And that's 6% of our budget is transportation. To the extent that we've been closed, district schools closed for, for, you know, a little over a month, that will reduce the transportation costs. Obviously, that's not a recurring reduction, but that is a, a, something that will accrue to us. As the auditor has mentioned, since transportation is reimbursed, it's just gonna hurt us next year because our revenues will be lower. Once you get past those top three items, then you've got our facility costs, engineers, custodial, utilities, repairs. That's about 31 million or 3% of our budget. And then everything else, every other contract, every other operational cost, every other instructional cost in the general fund is about 41 million or 4%. So our budget is, is, there, there's, you know, it's a big budget. A lot of it's fixed, a lot of it's employee-based. We know that. And, and the, the, the rest of it, there's not, there, there aren't big dollars relative to potential deficits that we could be dealing with. And what I have in the, in the bottom half of this chart is looking at, the first bullet is trying to look at if we, if we had to reduce our, our bargaining units back to where they were in terms of total staffing in 2014, 15, it would be a reduction of about 682 FTEs or $43 million in 2021. And that's if we did it now. If, if we waited half a year, that number would be less. If, if you had to reduce 682 FTEs to bring staffing levels back to where it was in 14, 15, next year, if those same levels were maintained, the savings would be 55.8 million. So that's, that's based on a full year of, of potential budget reductions and also some adjustments and things like unemployment and things like that. These next two ones are looking at it a little bit differently, but just saying, if, if we had to reduce 50 million out of our 2021 budget, it would, it would take 753 FTEs. And I, and in this case, I just spread it evenly across bargaining units, not, not, not choosing, you know, proportionately one over the other. And those savings would be 65.2 million next year. And again, it's the same thing, that based on if, if and when reductions are made, that, that, that determines what, what their budgetary impact is in any given year. $100 million reduction is really not something I think that would even be achievable this year at, at this level. If you, if we were trying to do that in 2021, general fund spending to, to get to that level, it would require an additional 412 FTEs. So 753 this year, 412 at the end of next year, 1,165 or 20% of our, of our staff. That's what it would take to, to, to do that. And that, and again, that's, that's assuming that we started in 2021. So that's, these are, you know, pretty substantial numbers. This doesn't take into account other, other things that would happen or could happen on other types of costs. But again, given that a lot of what we have is fixed and, and we, we don't have control over it, and many other costs are not necessarily fixed, but they're, but they're, they're things that we have to provide. You know, we're, we're in a, in a situation, potentially, based on what type of reductions may come down, where we're, we're in that, and again, that's why we've used those terms for some time now, that devastating or unrecoverable level of reductions to, to the services that we provide. And, and that's, that's, that's essentially directly related to the, you know, what, what happens with state aid and federal aid over the coming months. And possibly, it's gonna take years for some of these things to shake themselves out. So I know that's, that's a lot in, in this slide. And, and I've, I've shown similar calculations. And again, these aren't meant to be anything that's a, a recommendation. It's really just looking at what, what would it take? What, what would these, you know, what would these numbers look like if, if we're looking at certain, certain numbers of, of staff? Or if you're looking at certain dollars? So, you know, definitely big, big numbers.
So in other words, the state has bets, gets some, a federal bailout because we cannot possibly deal with any of these, this level of reduction or cuts. And I, I think it's a positive sign that you said that the, decided to give us all of our aid in September. But we just have to be very realistic, looking at the, the best case and the worst-case scenario on this current year, what we're facing. So that's why I wanted you to walk through that because we need to be aware of this and do everything we can to try to lobby or get a, a, a favorable federal government bailout given this next election. Political, but we, we, we need this, we need the feds to give us some income and bail New York State out for the COVID costs. Does anyone have any questions about the drastic situations we're facing in this current year, 2020, 21? Okay, I know, I know it's late, and we're very much over time. So the only thing I wanted to mention on the grant update is that, Jeff, thank you for preparing the updated numbers in the grant committee and, and board members. We will probably have to look to these grants. When, 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 when there's cuts in these grants, I just want the board members to look at the significant amount of money. We have 100 grants in here, and they may, they may have to have reductions. And I want us to be aware, knew, when there's cuts, to see if impact is disproportionate, to make sure any impacts from the grants don't impact our key priorities. If there's positions that are gonna be reduced, the board has a responsibility to know, take a look at it, and, and make sure we know the impact on our students. So if we can, there are some increases in the grants. If you look at them, like $700,000 on the Title I. And look at those increases in the grant funding as a, a way to get some of our initiatives because there are programs and initiatives that each of you board members came and you want to address, and you want to pass the superintendent. Hey, these are some of the things that are important to our constituents. These are new initiatives, and we can't bring him a request unless we can look and say, hey, well, Dr. Cash, about, what about this initiative? What about this fund? To be able to help to get these new initiatives. So I'm not gonna try to go over the, all the grant list, but everyone did receive it, and there are some significant increases, and there are some significant new grants in there. And take it from there, if you, because I don't want to belabor or one much longer.
You have two hands that are up. Terrence Hurd and Larry Scott, hands are up. Larry, was your hand up before, for the, for when Jeff was speaking? No? Okay, so Terrence and, okay, then Larry, you pulled it down? Okay, Terrence and Larry, okay?
Yeah, I, I thought I'd make it quick. This message is for actually Dr. Cash. Our governor said that we have to hope for the best but prepare for the worst. Now, what do you see if we're in the same position next year to where we're receiving budget cuts and, and we're still maybe in the remote learning phase? Or, or the COVID virus hasn't, hasn't satisfied enough, you know, to reopen schools? Or we don't have enough support to, to manage our COVID tests with, with our children? Next year is time. What do you see as far as our budget and keeping personnel FTEs? And, and keeping up, you know, trying to maintain a proper education?
I see us heading into that unrecoverable scenario. Can't get any clearer than those, that last slide. And that's why we've got to finish, we got to finish it. And two, are we down to two, two weeks, three weeks? You got to go finish it, people. And then in the new year, maybe we'll have a different government and a better outlook on stimulus. Because without a significant stimulus relief package for our state, and then that correspondingly comes to us and what we needed in the big urban districts in New York State, this situation is gonna put us back, put us way, way back. And, and equity won't be a conversation. It'll be annihilated. I think that was the word that Sharon used. So that's why we talked about the three major ad hoc committees. We got work to do in each one of them. And while that's going on, you got to get a new government in here. That's how I see it.
Thank you.
Larry?
Agree with that, Dr. Cash. I, I just want clarified, because I've been seeing emails for a while now about grants and cuts to grants. We, as a board in, in the district, don't determine the amount in grants or grants being cut. Unless I'm seeing something incorrectly, the, the grants that we have are set from the state and from federal government, maybe private grants. And so it, it's not us or the district that would be making cuts to grants, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Jeff, that was excellent. That was excellent. Now that's
No, wait a minute. The question that you're, you're asking, the question that you've been seeing emails on are very simply, when we keep the estimates for the grants, when we were adopting the budgets, the award levels estimated at that time were significantly lower than what we received. It determines the award of the grant, but there was a million dollars indicated was being lost. It was an estimate. They thought title one, title two, and these grants were coming in lower. And the budgets were balanced to the lower figures. So when Sam said, no, the actual awards are higher by seven hundred thousand dollars in and, and three hundred thousand in another, that is a significant change. Board should be aware of it and, and if that's an increase in revenue, then the board is an opportunity for the board to say, hey, Dr. Cash, this, this grant has this extra, increased award. What are we doing with it? Here are some ideas a board would like to see funded. And that we ask for grants purposes that we don't want to put in our operating fund. So as part of the revenues, looking for funding for new initiatives so we can improve and provide the initiatives and STEM and in other programs. These are areas that we have to look at. We have to look at our grant funding. And that's why you see the emails. I'm bringing your attention to your areas what funding initiatives and your responsibility to know if there are cuts, what are the impact and to review them. We have to review the operating budget and the grant budget and we need an initiative on the capital. So that's my responsibility is financing up here. It's our responsibility on these ad hoc committees. And I just wanted to make sure we had updated figures. And I have to thank you, Jeff, for updating the figures. And we do have on the agenda for next month to go in detail because if we go to the grants, we want to know the positions again. We want to know the changes. So that's what it's all about, Larry. Does that, does that give you further clarification?
Well, it clarifies that, and so did Jeff, that we aren't making the cuts to grants. But now I understand that there's been a growth in what we have passed in the budget. For example, in title one. But we are also, or the district is required to then spend that increase on particular staff and in particular ways, correct, Jeff?
Your ways, not necessarily on staff.
Yes, and, and you know, the title one meeting next week or next, next committee meeting, I think will be really informative of how the process works. But for just a couple of examples on the, on these things that, you know, some of these grants increase because there's carryover. And what, these grants are part of the school-based budget. So if, if, when the grants department finds out that a grant gets to carry over fifty grand, let's say, from the prior year, they work with that school that had that grant to figure out how they want to, you know, how they wanted to, how they wanted to work that into their school-based budget. These aren't dollars that are just set aside to be determined later. And some of the things like the title one program, we don't fund the entire title one program in the title one budget. So if you were to look at the title one budget and look at what things title one does, you'd see that title one does some things that are not in that initial budget because we're waiting on either carryover or the final allocation. So that, that will make it, I think, clear a little bit of how, how these things work. I think this is a great report and I'm glad the question was asked because I, I think it's important every quarter when we go over the grant awards to show, let's show what changes in our, in our grants. And, and there's some, you know, there's certainly some things that are interesting to look at. Like you'll, you'll note the CARES grants, those, the gear and the S are those two big grants. That was the amount that came from that new federal aid. You know, you'll see those in there. If we get a new large grant, you'll see that in there and you'll see where it fits with all the rest of them. But none of these, none of these grants are, are just dollars that are awarded above and beyond what we thought that we can then just use for anything that we want. In most cases, these things already have a school that they're tagged to. They already have a program that they're tagged to. And all that means is that that program can actually, can actually spend on what its intent was. And, and the title one conversation next week, I think will make that abundantly clear because that's our largest grant. And that, that one will explain, I think, how, how these work, you know, in total. And again, there's, I don't know, there's maybe a hundred grants in here, so there are, there are definitely a lot of them.
There are hands raised. I can't see who has their hand raised, but there are two hands raised.
I have my hand up. I don't know who else has their hand up. But I want to be real clear about this equity statement. Because this board is committed to making sure that equity starts happening in this district to the children who have not been receiving it. Now, we have some schools that have five, four, four music teachers. We have some schools that don't have any. Okay, so just music in itself was a board, was a priority for this board. Okay, so we are going to be looking at areas where we can cut. We have got to stop spending money in areas that are not benefiting our children. And that needs to be, we, we need a, 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 a in a lot of these situations. We are, we are paying people to do resources for us and we're not getting our results. So the money is there. It's just a matter of how we're going to choose to allocate it. But it's not okay to continue to let some children have it all and other children's not, don't have any. So we have to look at that. Okay? And I'm very concerned about when someone makes a statement about, because equity, especially from where I come from, when times get hard, you tighten the budget to make sure you skim the fat off and you make sure you continue to survive. And so that's all we're talking about here with this equity piece, is making sure that we continue to grow our children. And one of the things we can do is expand our high school. Our innovative high schools can be expanded and we can reduce the, the bleeding from the, from the high schools, from the charter schools, just by removing some adults out of some buildings and putting them over in some other buildings. And our enrollment in these schools. We need to have some serious talks this year and I'm happy to have them. But we're not going to come here and act like we're not going to move things forward after passing a resolution. That's not who this board is. Okay? They want every child to receive the same benefits. And we need to be talking about a baseline education for every child in this district to make sure that every child is receiving what, what each school is receiving. Because some of this is, is just not, is not fashionable, some of the stuff that's going on. But we're going to work that. I mean, and so where I come from, when times get hard, skim the fat off and you keep moving. And we got a lot of fat, I believe, to skim off. You know, we really do. Times situation, once we start dealing with that next month, we're going to see where some fat is. Okay? We're going to see that. Okay? So we're going to, we, I, I already didn't figure out two positions out from the overtime stat that we can get, some money that we can get just from overtime. But we have a lot of work to do, but we're not talking about not providing equitable resources to children in this district. Okay, ever again. I, I hear you, I hear you talking. So I want to see what you come up with when we come up and have to cut fifty to a hundred million dollars. I want to see your recommendation come to the board so we can all look at.
Allow us to have some. Good. We'll be happy to recommend.
Bring your recommendations.
Our great minds sitting up in here.
I look forward to it.
Start with a baseline
Overtime position is not going to make a dent in it.
So what, Dr. Cash, we start with just some basic, basic things in this district to cut costs.
I look forward to the conversation.
Okay, so we will be in this conversation.
Good.
Not providing children with equitable resources. That party's over.
I know.
Okay, Dr. Cash and, and Madam President, oh, Kathy has her hand. But I just want to say, that's our main, it's the board's responsibility to take a look at it and make sure it isn't equitable, that the children who need the most aren't the ones getting hurt and cut. Across-the-board cuts is a non-starter with any student, any budget person. Because some people have fat and some people don't have anything. So we're not talking about across-the-board cuts. We're talking about taking a look at the impact and making a sound plan. And I know you will do that, Dr. Cash, and we're going to help. Dr. Brown, you have your hands up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we continue to be in this pandemic and across this country in urban, urban school districts, we're saying hardcore conversations as well. When you talk about, you know, state cuts and stuff and, you know, then talking about opening up schools, it is very costly. And no one has given us any additional dollars to do it in the right way. And so I'm, I'm excited about an agreement in our Congress to pass the stimulus package so that we can get those dollars and do it right. We're not going to do it right with the dollars that we have. For third vote.
Okay, Dr. Cash, last word to you because we want to go home.
I don't have any last words.
Anyone else?
Vote on November third. That's my last word.
Fill out your census, please.
Thank you, Sharon.
Get a motion to adjourn.
Terrence has a comment. Go.
What'd you say, Terrence?
No, no. Vote, vote. I said vote, yes.
Your life depends on it, your kids too.
Everybody post it to all your family in every state to go vote. Tell them to share.
Fill out the census too. Don't vote without filling out census.
Fifty-four point four percent buffalo. We need to do better.
Unfortunately, guys, the, the Supreme Court just ruled that it's okay for President Trump to stop count. They're not going to go to October thirty-first, so we will not be getting an equitable out in the urban areas. That's the newest update on that, on that issue. They're stopping the, the census and it's not going to October thirty-first.
How that affect equity?
After we vote, we'll, we'll have another discussion. There's a motion to adjourn on the table, yes?
If you have a baseline education for all students, let's start with that. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all that for your meeting. And I'm looking forward to this conversation because we're not going to have the haves and the have-nots continuing up in this camp. Not anymore. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.